All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular City Council meeting of June 24, 2025. It is now 7 o'clock PM. Madam Clerk, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Torres Walker.
President.
Councilmember Freitas.
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Rocha.
Here.
Mayor Bernal.
Here.
All members present at 7 o'clock PM.
Thank you. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it's now time for public comments. Madam Clerk, will you please read the rules and then we will find out how many folks we have for public comments?
Welcome to a meeting of the Antioch City Council. Your attendance is appreciated. The State Ralph M. Brown Act guarantees the public's right to address the City Council within the framework of Speaker rules. Because agendas that encompass many business items, Speaker rules enable the meeting to be efficiently conducted and concluded at a reasonable hour. The City Council can only take action on items that are listed on the agenda. If you wish to speak about an item not on the agenda, the public comment section of the agenda is for you. Unagendized comments are provided until no later than 7:30 PM, when the City Council moves on to agenda items. There is an opportunity for public comments at the end of the meeting. If you wish to speak either during public comments or during an agenda item, please fill out a Speaker Request Form located at the entrance of the Council chambers. Please place the Speaker Request Form in the tray near the City Clerk before the City Council meeting begins. This will enable us to call upon you to speak. The Speaker Request Form is retained as a public record and, as such, may be shared with others upon request in line with the California Public Records Act. On your Speaker Request Form, please identify if the comment is for announcement of community events, public comment, or a specific agenda item. No one may speak more than once on an agenda item or during public comments. Speakers will be notified shortly before they are called upon to speak. When you are called upon to speak, please limit your comments to the time allotted, up to three minutes, at the discretion of the mayor. The Consent Calendar is a group of items which are determined to be routine. These items are usually considered all at once and approved without further discussion. If you are opposed to action which is recommended for an item on the Consent Calendar, please submit a Speaker Request Form before the meeting and place it in the Speaker Card Tray near the City Clerk. This will enable the item to be removed from the Consent Calendar and call upon you to speak. Mayor, we currently have 14 Speaker Cards.
All right, so we'll give two minutes per Speaker, please.
Okay, our first speaker is Nikia Bradshaw, followed by Malia Cooper and Morelia Gil Kubio.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. So today I will be speaking on behalf of Antioch Council of Teens. So this program is a really good program. I feel like this program would be very important to keep because I feel like the youth, we need something for the youth to do out here, especially like if they're like not having anything to do. With this program, they have something to do. And as me being a member, I feel like this program is really helpful. It helped me to meet more friends, helped me to socialize, and it gave me more opportunities like this to speak up to you guys right now. So that's very important. And then not just that, but I think this program is very helpful because like teens, they not only socialize, but they can get volunteer opportunities, like whether if it's speaking at the City Council meeting or just volunteering in general. So I think that's an important factor you guys should probably keep. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Next speaker is Malia Cooper, followed by Morelia Gil Kubio and Kimberly Figueroa.
Hello. I'm here to go speak on the Youth Department slash ACT because we do deserve to be go get our opportunity, especially in this day of age. So I would say I will speak to ACT number one. That's my first point. You guys should keep Antioch Council Teens, number one, because we have opportunities, like what Nikia said, the first person. And also you go get connections everywhere through Antioch with the Youth Department. And you clearly see Spring Board for the older kids too of youth. They have opportunities. And then even when it comes to the less, how put it, good kids, you guys should also put a factor when it comes to bridge builders of the Youth Department because they make them improve from worser to greater, in my opinion, from what I see in the past three years of doing stuff from Antioch Council Youth and Youth Department. So you guys should really, really keep Youth Department because we will improve one way or another. And y'all should really give us money because we will make us outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Morelia, followed by Kimberly and Grace Fung.
Good evening. My name is Morelia Gil. I'm an alumni from Antioch High School who is currently participating in one of Antioch's summer internships, Spring Board. After hearing the budget plans being considered, I knew I had to stand before you all. I can say with certainty that I couldn't have been nearly half-ass driven nor engaged in my community without the Youth Services Division and the people managing it like Montra and my LB. It was thanks to the Antioch Council of Teens, which I'd joined since sophomore year, that I learned what a City Council meeting even was. And it was thanks to them that I've come up here a number of times to speak about subjects I'm truly passionate about. I urge you to reconsider your budget plan. Don't limit the extracurricular and volunteer and career building opportunities offered to eager youth by the city. We as students and future professionals from Antioch are already behind on a myriad of things compared to peers from other cities because of economic hardship. The number of times someone's face has crunched up or changed into a fake smile the minute I say I'm from Antioch is truly disheartening. Being able to depend on programs provided by the city where I won't be discriminated upon fosters pride and reliability. Youth Services has always had my back. Even when I couldn't attend an Antioch Council Teens meeting as often as I wanted, they still reached out to me individually to inform me of upcoming events that I could participate in. Members from Youth Services even wrote my nomination letters for the Contra Costa Youth Hall of Fame, which I was inducted to in 2024. They've given me so much, and I want other adolescents and young adults to have the ability, the chance to gain as much as I did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kimberly Figueroa, followed by Grace Fung and Emily Gonzalez.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kimberly. Thank you for letting me talk. I'm very nervous, but I still wanted to make my point be heard. So the number one thing I want to say and leave with you guys is that the PC, PSCR department is, never turns on anyone. I've seen multiple circumstances where everyone gets placed with different circumstances. And I know that my department, I don't want to be biased, but my department always makes sure to welcome them with open arms and to give them resources that can help them move forward. So that's like the number one that I have seen in the PSCR department. And then just one more point before I close this off, at least my speech, is that I was raised by a single mom with little to no money, and these programs that this department offers would have helped me feel more welcomed in the community I was raised in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Grace Fung, followed by Emily Gonzalez and Anita Robinson.
Hi, my name is Grace, and I just recently graduated from Antioch High School as well. I just wanted to say this is the city of Antioch. How can we say that opportunity lives here when it is dying in this very meeting? The Department of Public Safety and Community Resources, PSCR, has provided me a great deal of work, educational, and volunteer experience. Since the summer of 2023, California residents have been expected to do mandatory composting. And I joined the Resource Recovery Ambassador's Program because I wanted to learn how to do so while making a difference, and environmental resources offer just that. Since the program started, residents of all ages, teenagers, adults, and the elderly, learned how to properly sort trash. I even volunteered at the Community Senator, Community Senator, Senator, Center, oh my gosh, sorry, to teach event goers where they should throw away waste. It was such a good experience that I came back to do it again this year. But without PSCR's programs like Resource Recovery or its leaders like Julie and Dawn, how are we expected to follow these state requirements like SB 1383, the composting requirement, if we don't even have the programs to execute them? And although I technically begin next month, this summer, I've joined the Build internship offered by the Youth Services. Build is such a unique experience because young adults like me are given an existing site in Antioch to design. We're going to learn how to do this while considering the real constraints of the building and budgets. But if we lose the PSCR department, where else are we going to get experience like this? Because I don't see any other cities giving their residents these kind of internships. Nowadays, people can't even get jobs without having the work experience. But if we no longer have the accessibility to the experience, then how are we expected to get the jobs? If the PSCR department is disbanded, then we'll lose the programs, internships, and resources that allow us to economically succeed and to open mobility. Opportunity must continue to live here, not die here. So let's keep the opportunity in Antioch.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Emily, followed by Anita and Rika Davis Sheard.
Good evening. My name is Emily Gonzalez, and I'm 18 years old. I've lived in Antioch my whole life. This community does what it can, but it could be doing, making the conscious decision to do better. It is no secret that there is a hole that we are in with money due to the police department's lawsuit. But cutting out essential resources that have helped to make so much progress isn't the way to go, and it sets us back to square one. Cutting from other departments to fund back into our police department is not the answer. The departments that are being cut are a central part of the community, just as the police department is. I have a nine-year-old brother who loves playing soccer. His entire team, the Diablo Valley Wolves, or the Lobitos, as we like to call them, is filled with the most talented kids I've ever met. They proudly represent this community every time they play on that field. However, they should not have to worry about homeless, potential harms, or issues that may come when they simply want to practice. City Park is a homeless camp with who knows what lying in the field. The James Donlin Sports Complex is constantly full to where they only get a sliver of the field. They will soon be growing, and it'll be insufficient to their progress. These Antioch teams should not be being pushed out by Brentwood, Pittsburgh, or Oakley. And these kids should get priority in their own community to do what they love and continue to grow. That's why bringing more community spaces is necessary, not just for them, but for everyone. They are the future of this community and deserve a place to do good things. All of us do. We want to see Antioch do better. Thank you.
Next speaker is Anita Robinson, followed by Rika and Bruce Kuhn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Really, my heart is beating really fast, but I felt compelled to come up and speak tonight as a member of, a staff member of Public Safety and Community Resources. When I heard our department could be consolidated with another department, it hurt my heart as far as me being, I'm sort of the front desk person, so I service the community with resources and other opportunities from our partners that, they may, the partners may not be able to get out to the community. I just want to share a brief story. Today, I was able to assist a father who had just lost his wife three months ago. He had two small children, seven and five. He didn't know where he was going to turn. He worked in Oakland. His family members were a bit over him. He was grieving really hard. And I was able to assist him with resources from CARE and also the Council, the Child Abuse Prevention Council. Because he didn't express it, but I could feel that he was, he was done. He didn't know where to turn. I was able to give him a food basket and resources, and he was so, so grateful. He just happened to be referred from the Recreation Department over to our department, and I get that every single day. People coming, they need resources. They need help with housing assistance, mental health awareness, domestic violence. And if our department were to go away, where would they turn to? Where would they go? Where would they find hope and healing? Thank you for listening.
Next speaker is Rika Davis Sheard, followed by Bruce Kuhn and Catherine Reza.
Hi, everyone. Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to take a moment to speak about the possible dismantling or disbanding of the Public Safety and Community Resources Department. In my opinion, it shouldn't even be on the table. There's a lot of, that department has, I know it's new, but that department has done a lot with very little. A lot of the budget that's in that department goes to, as you all know, goes to the police department. These services, the other services in that department, need their own dedicated staff. As one of the fundees from that department who receives money from the city to provide services to the unhoused, if I didn't have dedicated staff members, it's already a slow process, as we know with the city. If I didn't have dedicated staff members that I was able to reach out to, things would be even slower or maybe not at all. Excuse me. So please, I'm asking, don't allow the environment and people that are poor, young, unhoused, and marginalized to suffer any further. These services are crucial resources and have the opportunity to adjust, excuse me, to address the root causes of crime and not just a Band-Aid or reactionary. We know that when our community is healthy and happy and whole, that those are, those can be some of the things that are the root causes or the lack of those things can be some of the causes that are associated with high levels of crime. And so instead of putting Band-Aids on things and just keep throwing things at the wall and seeing if they will stick, let's look for actual solutions. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bruce Kuhn, followed by Catherine Reza and Skylar.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Councilmember and community supporters. My name is Bruce Kuhn. I'm the Program Coordinator for the Contra Costa Youth Journalism Program, which is a countywide program that trains high school students on how to journalism and how to cover local news to help connect their community, to help inform people of important things such as what you're doing here tonight. I'm here to voice support for Antioch's Department of Public Safety and Community Resources, and in particularly the Youth Services Program. We actually don't have an official relationship with your department, but we have been in discussions with them with our vision and mission of how, without young people learning how to tell stories, how to be trained in truth-telling and seeking, these kind of issues are not going to be dealt with. You're not going to have all the information you need, the public needs, to reach difficult and challenging decisions. So we're here to help support because young people are capable right now of telling these stories. In fact, many of our students, two of whom are from Antioch, one of them spoke here earlier, Emma Maya Canales at Deer Valley High School, and Madeline Havenon from Dozier Libby. Their stories have not only appeared on our program website, they've been reprinted by the East Bay Times and local news. In fact, the latest story by Emma talked about what was being done on climate change in Contra Costa, and that's where I learned about your program, CARP, and Councilmember Walker's role on that back in 2020. These are young people helping tell stories, take a part in their community. So we urge you to take a close look, support these young people and the people who are serving them. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Catherine Reza, followed by Skylar and Crystal.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I was supposed to be with my security staff today for Rayleigh Center. I'm the manager. You've seen me a couple of times. I just wanted to readdress the email I sent to a few of you members a few weeks ago about asking for stronger police presence in our shopping center because of when my tenants was broken into yet again, robbery. And, but I want to commend the Chief Staff Vigil for being active and also Chippoloff for contacting me and trying to get stronger police presence. And I just want to acknowledge that they have recognized, and Rayleigh Market and the other tenants have recognized that there is stronger police presence because of my coming here and just addressing that. We need stronger, you know, police force. And I know just tonight, seeing that there's a lot of other issues on hand, and I'm hoping they all get addressed. But I'm just appreciative that you guys are taking these means seriously. these means seriously. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Skylar, followed by Crystal and Leslie May.
Hello. If you perceive with the budget cuts, the community will be gravely impacted. Many people rely on the services PSCR provides, and it would be, and they would be left without safety. Not only that, Youth Services and Recreation Department have put on many events and meetings with the goal to keep the community safer and more enjoyable for everyone. And I'm aware that several of you have gone to the events that they put on and spoken at them, but a few of the events that they put on is Juneteenth and Dia de los Muertos. Both of these are huge cultural events and mean a lot to the community. Taking away these budgets will make the events very unlikely to happen. And other events consist of teen nights, Easter Travaganja, and Food Truck Thursday. These places are, these are places where the community can meet up and enjoy time together. While, and while doing that, keeping the community safer and creating a safe, enjoyable time for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Crystal, followed by Leslie May and Ashley.
Hello, City Council. Everybody that's here, thank you. As a child, I was molested from the age of 12 to 18 till I got out of my house from my stepfather. So school was very important to me, and it kept me sane. Okay? I was able to, you know, back 1997, not telling my age. We had a lot more programs than, than the kids do now. My children had no outlet except for, you know, this program that was at, at the school. And I'm just like, for me, I feel like these programs are super important because y'all don't know what these kids go through. These programs don't only help them with successful stuff, but they help them emotionally, mentally, and physically. They can't get through some things without it. Mr. Rocha, you should understand that. You've been a principal. You've been up at the school. This should not even be on the dang table. I don't even understand why it's even in front of us right now. This absolutely makes no sense to me. I also have the park and the, at the end of Manzanita has been completely torn up. They, they have been trying to fix it since like 2021 or 2022. It's not fixed yet. There's never any trucks down there fixing it or working on it. Our kids have no park to go to. I also had a resident that was swept from off of Sycamore. She's a lady. She sleeps in front of Sycamore because she has no other place to go, and it's the most, it's the best spot that she has because she has no other place to go, and she's, she's safe there. She was swept out with no reason. Also, what else? That's it. So can y'all not get rid of this program and think about the kids and not yourself?
Thank you.
Next speaker is Leslie May, followed by Ashley and Aisha Hall.
Good morning. I mean, good morning. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm coming to speak up because we need this department. It was years, things were going on here before it was developed. And thanks to Councilmember Torres Walker and some other ones that said, no, we need this. Now you're coming in here snatching it out from underneath everybody's feet. It's like snatching a rug out. This is ridiculous. This is ridiculous. And on top of that, then I understand you're trying to put the city manager over that department. So, you know, they always want to say I say racist things. They misconstrued what I said when I sat, sat at that meeting. They changed the way you wanted to change the whole narrative. But I'm going to say this, you know, I'm so tired of black women having to carry the weight of, 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 of other folks' decisions. Well, well, this black woman, she could, she, she's got enough to do with the city manager. She's trying to handle all this police mess and everything else that's coming out here. Oh, that's all right. Well, it is, he, this department on her too. She can do the duties of that. That's not fair. That's one woman. That's one black woman who's also a mother. Okay, she has a child, underage child. She needs to give her child some time, besides giving City of Antioch all that time. But along with the fact that you're trying to dismantle a program that helps underserved, poor people with, as the people said, mental health needs and everything, people are coming there for help. But to me, this sounds like another means to that Project 2025 that you're trying to do here at Antioch. We're not for it. We ain't going to go be for it. So it's going to be a problem if you dismantle that department. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ashley, followed by Aisha Hall and Majori.
Eight years ago, I stood before the City Council and I introduced my daughter. Today, she'll be able to speak to you on her own as a seventeen-year-old, a part of We have witnessed a youth twice now come and beg you, beg you to keep services. You want to cut services and give them to the police department. Newsflash, youth services is a part of intervention. It should come out of the police budget. And since you won't believe the city, we have to beg you so opportunity can live here. Why don't we have the police chief come and talk to you guys for three minutes about the benefit of having services for youth? Because down the line, it will decrease their intervention with, or their association with police officers. It'll keep them out of prison. We have black and brown kids here that need something to do. When I grew up here, I had something to do. We were always at, we could go to Nick Rodriguez if we were bored. Because we could spend the night there. We had parties. The city took us to Disneyland. Why are we going backwards? Get your crap together. Mr. Rocha, your mom could write a book on youth services. Your family has been a champion for children in this community since the seventies. I expect you to stand up for the kids of this community. That's your family legacy. This is disgusting and despicable. And like this girl said, this town is dying. It looks like crap, and it shows.
Next speaker is Aisha Hall.
I received an email to come and show support. Normally, when I do come, I normally don't talk because I like to listen and learn. I get a lot of knowledge from my elder right here. And like the two ladies said earlier, I don't understand why this is on your budget. So what I'm seeing here today, because I think everybody else covered everything, but what I'm seeing today was happening here, it was, it was happening in our government. Things are being taken away by people who don't consider those that they think there are, that's less superior than them. They matter. You may not think it. You may think you're mimicking someone that's up there destroying this whole country, making us all feel unsafe. Because when these youth are running around here, doing things because they don't have nothing better to do because there are no resources. I come from Richmond, where Ms. Walker comes from, Torres Walker's come from. And I know what it's like when they took away our Martin Luther King Center, our Boys Club, and how our whole environment changed because of that. So when you do that, and then when you feel unsafe, when something happens to you or your family member, don't say nothing at all. You want to take away something that she created because she created it? That's why you want to do it? Because that's what he's done? Taking away all of our things that we accomplished in this country that we built? And you want to sit up here and do the same thing in this city? My kids may not be a part of these programs because they're on the spectrum, and I'm teaching them things that they need to learn that's for them to be successful. But this program is really needed. You trying to take it away don't make no sense to me. Why would you do that? You come in here, you want to be mayor. Last meeting I came to, you didn't know more than what she knew. You were going off what she, she had to tell you, correct you. But you want to take away a program that you don't have no business doing, taking it away?
Next speaker is Majori.
This will be the last speaker.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I'm short. Good evening, Mayor, Bernal and Councilmembers and community leaders. My name is Marjorie Trujillo, and I represent our RTH. We proudly partner with Youth Services and Montserrat Cabral to offer free tutoring for our youth in our community. I stand before you not just as a program leader, but as someone who tutors these kids week after week. I see their struggles, and more important, I see their transformations. This program is not just about academics. It's about dignity. It's about hope. It's about giving our children the belief that they are capable of greatness, even when life has tried to convince them of the otherwise. I want to share the words of one of my students with you guys. "I used to think I would never achieve anything in life. I wished for so long to hear my name called on the honor roll. But I always had Fs and Ts. After joining the tutoring program, I made it to the honor roll. Thank you for believing in me. Now I believe in myself. I'm going to NASA." That's the power of this program. She didn't just improve her grades, she discovered her worth. We are raising future scientists, artists, leaders, and problem solvers, but we can't do it alone. I'm asking you to help us keep this program running so more students can rise above the barriers that life has placed in front of them. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and for believing in our youth.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number one, introduction of new city employees, promotions, and retirement.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. We have two groups tonight. We're going to strike the Human Resources and Public Works introductions and have our IS director introduce a new staff member, and our police chief introduce new staff
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce Nicole Baptista as our new administrative assistant for the IS Department. Come on down. Nicole has a bachelor's degree in business administration with an HR concentration from UNLV. Before joining the City of Antioch, she worked in HR at UNLV and attended, and interned with the City of Livermore HR Department.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I am so honored to be here, and I am loving my time at the City of Antioch, and I'm very excited to see how this goes. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and Community. I have a lot, so I'll try not to get too dry mouth. I'll start first, first with our promotions. I'll start with Sergeant Matt Mulholland. Sergeant Mulholland began his law enforcement career as a deputy with the Alameda County Sheriff's Office and worked there for over seven years. While there, he worked in patrol at the Eden Township substation and in custody operations at Santa Rita Jail. Sergeant Mulholland would come to the Antioch Police Department just over five years ago. Throughout his time here, he has held a variety of assignments. He has been a field training officer, a crisis negotiator, a jug recognition expert, and a corporal. Sergeant Mulholland has a bachelor's degree in liberal studies with a minor in history and is completing his master's degree in organizational leadership with a concentration in emergency management and disaster science. Sergeant Mulholland lives locally with his wife Samantha, their newborn son Shane, and his daughter Savannah. Sergeant Mulholland.
City Council, Mayor, City Manager, Chief, thank you for this opportunity to continue to serve the Antioch Police Department in this expanded role. My main focus, this is, this is my life's calling. I'm a police officer. That's who I am. This is the city I police. My main focus is to keep this city safe and do whatever I can to establish trust and, and help the city thrive. So that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sergeant Joe Chandler. Sergeant Chandler began his law enforcement career in 2016 in the South Bay and lateral to Antioch in 2020. While at APD, he has served as a field training officer. He's a team leader for our crisis negotiation team and a post-certified instructor for many de-escalation courses. Joe enjoys serving the Antioch community and is dedicated to helping APD grow. Sergeant Chandler.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to thank everybody, thank Council, and I'm excited to help the city out in my new role.
Corporal Duffy. Corporal Duffy was born and raised in Antioch, the city he proudly serves today. He holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and is a US Navy veteran, having served six years as a master at arms. Before joining the Antioch Police Department, he worked as a deputy sheriff with the Alameda County Sheriff's Office. Since joining the Antioch Police Department, he has served as a field training officer, is a current member of the crisis negotiation team, and for the past four years, he has been assigned to the department's investigative bureau's violent crime unit. Since joining the Antioch Police Department, oop, wrong, wrong line, sorry. Corporal Duffy. There's too many.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. First off, I want to thank the chief for entrusting me in this new leadership position. As the chief said, I grew up in this city, and I'm honored to continue to serve my community in this new capacity. So thank you.
Corporal Downey. Corporal Downey grew up in Martinez, where he attended Alhambra High School. After graduating in 2002, he joined the United States Marine Corps as an MV-22 crew chief. John became certified as an EMT and worked for AMR in Alameda County for seven years. Since joining the Antioch Police Department, Corporal Downey has held a variety of assignments. He has served as an officer in patrol, been on the recruiting and social media teams, and currently serves as a drone operator. When he is not working, he enjoys spending time with his wife Helen, his two sons Dominic and Trevor, and his daughter Mackenzie. Corporal Downey.
Good evening. I just want to say thank you to Chief V. Hill, the Police Department, Council, and the Mayor. I'm going to do my best to continue to serve this community and the city and do everything I can with this promotion and try to make you guys proud. Thank you.
Markendra Wilson. Lateral Police Officer Wilson was born in Oakland. Growing up, she played a lot of sports, which included volleyball, basketball, softball, and track. In her free time, she enjoys fishing, hiking, and traveling. She also enjoys spending time with her daughter. Prior to joining APD, Officer Wilson worked for OPD for almost two years. Fun fact, Officer Wilson is currently rebuilding a 1989 Chevy Caprice that was formerly a police car and has been featured in I Almost Got Away With It. Markendra Wilson.
I got it right, right? Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to lateral over from the Oakland Police Department. This is a new city to me. I'm learning everything all over. Thank you for the support, and hopefully I can give you guys the best I can. Thank you.
Academy graduate Daniel Cabada. Daniel was born in Pittsburgh and grew up in Brentwood. He graduated from Liberty High School. His favorite subjects in school were history and science. Growing up, he enjoyed learning martial arts and watching combat sports. He is excited and honored to start a career with the APD. Fun fact about Daniel, he's a Blue Belt in Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu.
Oh, good. Just want to say thank you to the Council here and Chief V. Hill for this opportunity to serve the City of Antioch. And I'm excited to get started in this new role, and I will do everything to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
Academy graduate Larry Alamilah. Officer Alamilah was born in Martinez and raised in Concord. Growing up, he played soccer and practiced Kung-Fu, and he's a first-degree Brown Belt. He attended Concord High School and shortly after attended Diablo Valley Community College. He received his AA in Administration of Justice. His hobbies include going to the gym, hiking, kayaking, and being outdoors. He enjoys traveling and has been to Mexico, the Dominican Republic, and the Bahamas. His favorite soccer team is the San Jose Earthquakes. Officer Alamilah.
Good evening to everybody. First of all, I would thank chief for giving me the opportunity to work here at the City of Antioch. It's always been a passion of mine to be a police officer, and I'm happy I could bring it here to the city. I will do the best of my ability to do my best and give the city everything I have.
Academy graduate Elias Orocio. He came back or no? We'll skip him. Academy graduate Lorenzo Ortiz. Lorenzo was born in Hayward and raised in Antioch. He graduated from Deer Valley High School in 2015. After graduating Deer Valley, Lorenzo attended Los Madanos College and CSU East Bay, where he earned his bachelor's degree in kinesiology. Prior to becoming a trainee, Lorenzo Prior to becoming a trainee, Lorenzo worked as a physical therapist aide at the Golden State Orthopedics and Spine. Fun fact about Lorenzo, he enjoys exercising and watching sports. Academy graduate Daniel Campos. Philip Rollins here? Come on in. We have officers kinda all over the city right now, so... Lateral Officer Philip Rollins. Philip was born in Fayetteville, Arkansas, and raised in the East Bay. He attended Liberty High School and graduated in 2018. After graduating, he started his career in law enforcement, serving in local communities nearby. For fun, Philip likes to spend time with his family, serve at his church, and wash cars. Philip is excited to start his career here at APD. Fun fact, Philip enjoys washing his car. Philip Rollins.
Well, I just wanna say thank you, everyone. It's great to see a community that's active and engaged in their city and wanting to see it grow and succeed, and I'm excited to be a part of that growth and the success of the city. So, thank you.
Is that it? All right, thank you. Any public comments on that item?
We do not have any public comment.
Any comments from City Council on this? Congratulations, everybody. Onto the next item, announcements of civic and community events. City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
I do not have any speaker cards for community... I'm sorry, announcement of civic and community events.
All right.
All right, good evening, Council. It is the summer, it is time to celebrate. We have the next celebration, which is Fourth of July. It's on a Friday this year. We're happy to announce that we will have the parade, no matter how hot it is, we have a contingency plan. So, we're still taking parade applications all the way until the 30th of the month. We look to start the parade at 4:00 PM, right on Second Street, and then right after the parade at 5:00 PM, we will start with our live entertainment, which will feature The Purple Ones, which is a Prince tribute band, and Ariel Moren, which is an R&B band, and then right after the bands perform, and then all the kids get finished playing in the City Hall Kid Zone with all the food trucks, we're gonna have fireworks right off the delta. So, everybody come down and enjoy fireworks in downtown Antioch. Along with that, right after that, we'll be having our community park movies every Thursday in the month of July, and the first movie on July 10th is Moana Two, July 17th is A Goofy Movie, July 24th is The Parent Trap, and July 31st is Holes. And these movies were selected by the community. We did a survey over the season, and this is what the community wanted, and that will be at Pruitt Family Park on the hillside of the water park. Bring your blankets, free popcorn, good times. Thank you.
Mr. Wright. Mr. Mayor. Since Mr. Wright is there, I just want to, you know, indicate the appreciation of the whole city of Antioch. Sometimes on community events, the staff who really puts it together, puts all the hard work in, never get recognized. And the two events I'm talking about, the Juneteenth event on June 19th, and then on Sunday, the farmer's market. And I just, I'm sure we speak for the Council staff and the community, Mr. Wright is the person with his team who makes it all happen, and it's very, very successful, and it was wonderful to see hundreds and hundreds of people come out for the Juneteenth, as well as for the farmer's market. You deserve a lot of credit, so publicly, I want, on behalf of the Council, to say thank you very much, and your team.
Yeah, I just say to that, really appreciate that. We have a great team. You know, I came from Richmond, working for the wine store over 15 years, and built a community, a family, and of, not only in the community, but also with our, the people that we, you know, hire, and we hire for passion, and we teach the skills. So, you know, I couldn't do it without all our part-time staff, all our full-time staff, and a lot of commitment and partnerships throughout the community. So, round of applause to the City of Antioch.
Thank you for coming to Antioch from Richmond.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
While he's still up here, I just wanted to show I was happy to be at the farmer's market on Sunday, got there a little bit later in the morning, and I had a chance to speak to Gail, who is the person, I believe, organizes the farmer's markets throughout the Bay Area. And I was impressed that, one thing that she shared with me that I wanted to share with you and to the community, was she had shared that generally, when it comes to organizing, planning such an event, that it takes up to about six months. And what she shared with me, and she specifically named you, along with other city staff members, that she was just shocked how they were able to pull this off in a matter of just six to eight weeks because of the, because of the positive energy of the people that wanted to make it happen. She was talking about the Rivertown Committee, she was talking about city staff, but she specifically mentioned you, how you were accommodating, you were supportive, you were helpful, and it was such a huge success on the very first Sunday, which I hope to see grow as the Sundays move on. But I just wanted to share that story because she told me that with all of the various farmer's markets that she's organized, and she's pretty much done, she said 19 to 20, I think she told me.
Correct.
That by far, the support that she received here, in getting this done in such a short window of time, was to be commended. So, I just wanted to share that with you, and with the community. Great job, and moving forward with something that we've been wanting to have happen here for some time, but with the right people and the right energy, it happened quicker than anybody expected. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just echo that. Great job, Juneteenth, so many people, I've never seen that many people out there, so great, great job with that. I went to the farmer's market, great job. You know what? Richmond's loss, our gain. So, thank you for choosing us. Great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Wright, it was great meeting your family at Juneteenth. That was super cool, seeing them up there dancing and all, so it was a great event. And I know it's a lot to pull something like that off, especially when there's little glitches, maybe getting performers up, and you just did a magnificent job just handling that whole situation so well. So, thank you for making us all feel at home at that Juneteenth event, and then, as folks have said, for expediting the farmer's market and getting it open this summer, which, as Gail, the organizer, said, that has never happened before, and she actually mentioned that Antioch was the best city she's ever worked with, so thank you for being a big part of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements of civic and community events? All right, seeing none. City Council Committee Reports and Communications.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam Rocha and I are both on the Board of Directors for Tri-Delta, and this is the fourth Tuesday, and we meet on the fourth Wednesday, so we'll have a report next time we are in session.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Torres Walker.
None of my committees met, and I will highlight those committees. So, I sit on the Green Empowerment Zone. We have not met. I think we're gonna meet again in September, but I'm currently working with the city manager and staff to be a part of a dialogue with the county and UC Berkeley to have a discussion around how during this just transition, how can the City of Antioch make ourselves more attractive to bring new industry, a new economy, in a new economy to Antioch, to support our growth, but also, you know, we're talking about a budget right now, and it's been a while since this city has had any real economic development, and so I'm excited about that. I was also, I'm also on the City and School Standing Committee meeting. I think we're not meeting again till August. I'm on CDVG. We met, and now we're gonna be discussing the CDVG commitments tonight. I was also appointed to the Rivertown Standing Committee, which has never met, so I don't know what it is because we've never met. So, hopefully, that Standing Committee can meet at some point, and that is it. I also wanna just say, you know, Kwame Reed is no longer with the city, but I definitely, I definitely... you know, I know, I'm a little bitter too, because I was locked, I was locked up as well. So, Kwame is no longer with the city, but I remember taking a trip with Kwame and a couple of other staff to visit an urban farm in West Contra Costa that is funded and supported by the county, and actually, Councilwoman Wilson, when I first came to the Council, always talked about Antioch being a food desert. And I kinda stepped in because I know what a food desert is like, but I also know what a food swamp is like. Meaning, a food swamp is that it's not a lack of food, it's just that there's a lack of access to healthy and affordable food options. And on the heels of those conversations, I remember talking to Kwame Reed about, as well as Tasha Johnson and the staff at the Department of Public Safety and Community Resources, as well as Parks and Recs, about not just a farmer's market, but urban farms and community gardens. So, this didn't take six months to happen. This has been a conversation that's been going on for years, and I think when people transition, we don't acknowledge them, but I think we do need to acknowledge Kwame Reed for kicking this conversation off, and as well as our city manager, who also said that she thought that this city needed a farmer's market, and so, thank you, City Manager Scott, for working with staff and making all of that happen. I also got to attend a couple of Juneteenth events, and city staff were also at all the events I went to, anyway. And wanna thank city staff for putting you all's work into even Sunday. Like, the city staff was out on a Sunday at a Juneteenth event with the stage and supporting, and that was extra time, and I know it's because y'all are committed to the community and bringing people together. One last thing I just wanna say is that, you know, Juneteenth is not just a one-time event. Foundational Black Americans fought for civil rights in this country. And if you consider yourself to be an immigrant, a Black immigrant, wherever you're coming from, and you came to this country for opportunities, you should know that foundational Black Americans created that opportunity in this country for you to have all the freedoms that you do through civil rights movements and other movements. And so, I would just encourage us all collectively, as diverse as this city is, is not to think of Juneteenth as a one-off Freedom Day. Black people, and particularly foundational Black people, are fighting for civil rights continuously every day, and even in this current moment under fascism, in a country that is currently not safe for people in dark bodies, in a country that is stripping resources from our most vulnerable communities, seniors, our youth, our veterans, and our poor people. And if there's anything you should know tonight, is that the war is waged on poor people through policymaking and budget decisions. And so, it's not always a physical war, it's always, it's not always a war by force, but wars are waged politically through policy. And you witnessed that in this council meeting many times. I'm sure you've witnessed it at the Board of Supervisors many times, and we're absolutely witnessing, witnessing that now at a national level. So, I just wanna thank everybody who spoke, and keep fighting for what you want, because at the end of the day, if we don't speak up, this war will continue to be waged on our communities. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Torres Walker. So, my last committee that met was Delta Diablo. We met a couple of weeks ago. That meeting mainly focused on the hard work of former Board Supervisor Federal Glover, who had been on that board for many, many years, and saw a lot of great policy pass through, so that last meeting was really a dedication to him and flying the flag at half-staff. I just heard it's not half-mass, it's half-staff, somebody corrected me. And so, we are having a special meeting this coming Thursday to go over some budget items there and some policy items there, so looking forward to reporting back on that. And then the other item I wanted to talk to, and our city attorney is gonna be able to help me with this, back in, was it 2016 or 2017, we worked with the California Massage Therapy Council, somewhere in that timeframe?
Yes.
And they helped us with a lot of policy and work around our massage establishments in our city to help give us guidelines and how to make sure that we have legal operations in our city. I know they have updated that, so we need to go through that policy, but the California Massage Therapy Council works statewide, along with our state legislators, in developing policy and guidelines and how, making sure we're regulating massage establishments so we don't have illegal massage establishments in, throughout the state of California. So, recently, I was asked to be on their Board of Directors, so starting in September, I will step on that board, and will be sworn in to work statewide on policy around massage establishments and policy, and making sure that the state stays very safe. So, wanted to let our Council know about that.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protam Rocha.
Well, my colleagues over here have already spoke to the committees that we belong to and have updated us on that. For example, the Chamber of Commerce meets this Thursday morning. Tomorrow, I believe, is the Downtown Business Association's having a meeting at the Historical Society here on, down on Fourth Street. So, the meetings that I have really have no report. We'll update as we go on, and the League of Cities is the other one I belong to. And so, anyway, for the sake of time, we'll go ahead and move on from there.
All right, thank you. I had a couple of meetings. Transplan Board met. We discussed the draft integrated transit plan, and the Tri-Delta Transit Comprehensive Operation Analysis, that's talking about making transit more available to the community on shorter timelines between stops. And so, that's something that they're working on. They're also, Tri-Delta's also working on expanding Try My Ride, the model where it's more like an Uber-type transit system as opposed to the fixed stops. Also had a East Contra Costa Regional Financing, Regional Fee and Financing Authority Board Meeting. We talked about priority projects that East Contra Costa County and the county will be getting. Each city and the county were given $25,000. Our projects were Sand Creek Road, that connection between Deer Valley Road and the extension of Sand Creek currently, and then also the extension of Slatton Ranch Road up there north of Lone Tree near Penny's, up to Laurel Road. So, those are a couple of projects that are on the list for the City of Antioch. And then we also had a Contra Costa Transportation Authority Board Meeting, where we talked about the Transportation Expenditure Plan, rebranding Contra Costa Transportation Authority. There's gonna be a new logo and a brand coming out for them. We adopted the budget, Measure J Strategic Plan for 2025, which is funding that's on a one-half cent sales tax that comes into the county that's used on large transportation projects. It's about $120 million budget this year. And then, state funding going toward high-speed rail, excuse me, being there's a reduction of about $4 billion expected from the feds, that will have to be addressed through the state. Regarding Mayor's comments, I just wanted to, we talked a little bit about the successful events, the Juneteenth event, the farmer's market. We have the Fourth of July event coming up next week, and I just wanna commend the staff and the City Council who are working towards building community here in Antioch, and making sure there's opportunities for folks to come together, to interact with each other. There were several thousand people at the farmer's market, probably close to as many at the Juneteenth event, though at least the one the city sponsored at Williamson Ranch, and we expect to have even more than that downtown on Friday for the Fourth of July. So, I just wanna, just let folks know that that is a underlying priority of mine, is to make sure that we're bringing community together in everything that we do, and so, I think we're starting to experience that in a greater measure, and I'm just excited to see what's gonna be happening in the future. Consent Calendar, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item Number Two, our Consent Calendar. Do we have any items to be polled by the Council or the public?
Mr. Mayor, when we came to the dice tonight, item, Consent Calendar, Item O and P, all right, so I'm assuming the city manager, there must be something new on these documents?
Thanks so much, Councilmember Freitas. There were some typos, nothing materially changed.
And so, Item J for me.
Item J, all right. Anything else from the Council, the Council wants to poll? Item J, alright, anything else from the council, the council wants to poll? Uh, I want to pull item number G, uh, and I want to pull, um, item number H. And I'd like to pull item... Item number, uh, yeah, those, those items right there. So, uh, are there any, any comments, public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to...
Sorry, we do have two speaker request forms for item K and item O. So, we have J, G, H, K, and O.
So items J, G, H, K, and O, is that correct?
Correct.
Alright.
Oh, we also have one for P.
Alright, and P, so we have items J, G, H, K, O, and P, uh, that are going to be polled. Do I have any public comments on these?
Yes, sorry, um, so we have K, Andrew Becker.
Okay, hold on, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent, um, calendar minus G, H, J, K, O, and P.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion second, please cast your votes.
Motion carries five zero. So our, our first public speaker is for item K, Andrew Becker.
Do we, no, do we start with G?
Yeah, we'll go ahead.
We only have public comment for K, O, and P.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do item number G first, then, and then we'll, so.
Thanks so much, Mayor and, um, council. This item pertains to a resolution declaring the city of Antioch is subject to Geological Hazard Abatement District Law, or GAD. Our Director Scott Bunty is here to, um, talk about the staff report and take questions.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. As the city manager stated, uh, this item is related to, uh, forming a geological hazard abatement district. Uh, it pertains to the ranch subdivision, uh, along Sand Creek Road. Uh, I do have with us, um, Kyle Masters of Richland Homes, as well as Eric Harlan of NGO, who would be managing the GAD, uh, that I would, I'd like Eric to come up and, and talk a little bit more about this item.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Um, my name is Eric Harrell, we're with NGO Incorporated. We are working with the developer of the ranch project, um, have been on the Geological Hazard Abatement District. As you are aware, Antioch does not have a Geological Hazard Abatement District. Um, that is many of them throughout the Bay Area. Um, Bay Area tends to be the center of, um, activity for Geological Hazard Abatement Districts. And, um, there were some questions today that were presented. Or I can take questions, or give a brief introduction to it, um, depending on what the council would like.
Yeah, we can go ahead and ask questions, and then to the extent that you can answer them or staff, it'd be great. So, uh, my, my question had to do with, uh, the liability that the city would have in the event that the GAD was underfunded or failed to exist in the future. What's, what's the city's responsibility for that?
Excellent, um, liability, a GAD is a state-level entity, and it is separate from the local agency, being a city or county that forms that agency. Um, what we, um, have looked at with other cities and counties who have looked at these is the amount of separation there is between the, um, activities of the city and the activities of the GAD. In other words, the GAD Board of Directors may be the city council members. Um, that is completely, um, that is one of the two methods to manage a GAD. And the other manage, way to manage a GAD is five property owners within a district. But the liability is, um, all the, um, best practices on that are as long as the city or county forming the district keeps the activities separate from their act, the activities of mingle, co-mingling the activities of the district with the city. That we have not seen a transfer of liability, um, for a city being responsible for financial, um, obligations of the GAD.
So I guess the, my other question's maybe to the city attorney, but is, will there be another action coming forward after this one? It since, it sounds like either the city council or the property owners need to be the board of the GAD?
Yes, there is a process that follows, this is just the notice of the intent to form the GAD. There's actually a formation process, somewhat like an assessment district where we do an initial resolution that will start the process, and then we'll come back and form everything.
Okay, so, there'll be more information at that time about how it's, what this, being this is new to us, what the structure is?
Yes.
Okay, all the responsibilities and all of that?
Yeah, this is, uh, this is just the start of the process, and, and all those particulars will be fleshed out.
Okay, alright, thank you. But that's all the questions I had, any council members have any questions? Alright, do we have a, a motion to approve item number, uh, G?
So move, second.
A motion in second, please cast your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
Alright, item number H.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. This item pertains to awarding a multi-year agreement to Terra Care Associates to provide turf mowing services for a three-year period, with an option to extend for two additional years. And Director Bunty is here to take questions.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Um, yes, this item does pertain to the turf mowing contract. This contract provides citywide mowing services for medians and right-of-ways in major alturios, which include but not limited to Hillcrest and Deer Valley. On April ninth of this year, staff published a bid solicitation for the turf mowing service through local newspapers, building exchanges, and the city's website. The service will include turf mowing and extra work as needed, as described in the attachment. Uh, on May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, two bids were received. The lowest responsive, responsive bid was submitted by Terra Care Associates. Staff is recommending awarding the agreement to Terra Care for the turf mowing services. Uh, Terra Care is qualified and experienced in landscaping services contractor and can meet the service requirements of the city.
Alright, is, is, yeah, is Terra Care, uh, still, is Terra Care, Terra Care the current contractor for the city?
They are, they are under contract performing, uh, a, a number of different tasks, yes.
And, which are similar to this contract here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I just noticed the second, the second bid or the other bidder was almost twice as much. This is five hundred, that was a million, so that's a big, big variance. And in just visiting some of our parks, I think the level of maintenance could be a little bit better when it comes to the weeds, the, the dry spots in the lawn, things like that. So, I was just wondering what their responsibility is as far as irrigation and things like that, keeping the, keeping the parks looking green and edged and weeded and all of that.
Pertaining to this contract?
This contract, yes.
This contract is to do with mowing. Basically, you're mowing turf within our right-of-ways and median areas. It's, it's not, it's not park, it's not a park project. This isn't a park maintenance, this is just mowing within our right-of-way. The, the random areas that we have along, say, Deer Valley, Hillcrest that do have turf.
Got it, okay, I, I thought this included parks, so, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, uh, even though that may be the case, a lot of our community parks, Country Manor, it's dying. You know, there are a lot of, uh, spaces that, you know, are just literally, it's becoming, uh, soil. And so, Terra Care does provide our service, right?
They do.
So, maybe, you know, having a discussion with them, because it's obvious in the neighborhood park I live in, and I suspect it's true in a lot of the parks that I've been around.
Understood, we can continue to have contra, conversation with the contractors. You are seeing a change in seasons also. Um, if there are some dry spots or some areas that need some more attention, we can definitely talk with them. We do look at these sites, if we happen to miss something, we will go out and take another look at it, um, and, uh, and see what we can do. But in terms of their work, we do contact the contractor, we are in conversations with them. Um, and if there is particular Country Manor Park, for instance, uh, we can definitely take another look at that and see if there might be an issue with, maybe there's an irrigation head that's out that hasn't been noticed, um, we'll definitely take a look.
I know it's not the Country Manor, but there are other parks that...
And we can, we'll definitely have that discussion with our parks as well as with the contractor.
Alright, any other questions or comments from council? Can I get a motion on this item?
I'll second.
Alright, please cast your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
Alright, item J.
Thank you so much. This item pertains to approving and adopting a list of projects for submission to the California Transportation Commission for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six that are eligible for funding by SB one, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of twenty seventeen. Director Bunty?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Um, there's a lot to this, uh, is there a question I can answer to maybe help out the process?
So I'm very happy the city's going to get over three million dollars to do road...
Microphone?
Road maintenance and rehabilitation. But on page three specifically, the last, the last bullet, it talks about the estimated youth, uh, project youthful life twenty years. We have in Antioch the pavement management system that basically grades and helps city staff determine where rehabilitation should go to the roads. As I've mentioned before, I've lived in my house for thirty-five and a half years, and it's cracked. It's have alligator cracks, and my house, my neighborhood is not unusual from anybody else's. And so, I don't have a lot of trust in the PMS system. And I think that at some future date that we need to have a discussion about this. I know it's necessary for us to get funding from Contra Costa Transportation Authority, return to source dollars, but I think the system isn't working. And after thirty-five and a half years, I've been waiting for a chip seal or slurry seal or, wow, repair. And my, my neighborhood is, uh, very similar to a lot of the others. So I really would like to have a discussion about the PMS system, because we depend on it, it's failing us. And I feel strongly about this, and so I'm not opposed to the item, I'm just bringing it because it gives us opportunity to talk about bringing back the system, and let's have a, a discussion about it.
Understood, we are moving forward with a, uh, it's a, it's a PTAP grant, uh, that will do another analysis of our roadway system. That's going to happen probably starting in October. That starts a process of a new evaluation of what our roads are, what the conditions are. Will help move us forward to the new process. With the, with that comes a reevaluation of our five, of our five-year plan. Um, and it gets moved around based on what we will see from, from this, uh, the service that will be provided for us, say, in October. So, we can definitely talk about it and, and talk about what their prioritizations are when that time comes.
That's fine, because when you read the estimated project life is twenty years, and this is almost double where I live and other people live, you know, something is not right.
Sure, there's a, there is a large backlog, uh, of roadwork that the city does need to do. We're, we are working on it. The intent is to, uh, get to the places that need it most, try to work in neighborhoods, try to, uh, kind of knock it out as best we can and clean up the areas that we can. Um, it is something that we are working to reevaluate the, the, the areas that will be constructed.
Alright, I'll move approval.
Right, a motion in second, please.
Second.
Alright, just cast your votes.
Mo, motion carries five zero.
Alright, item K.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. This item pertains to approving a second amendment to telecommunication network license and encroachment agreement with Crown Castle Fiber LLC. And Director Bunty will just live at that podium.
Yeah, just for the last one, again, um, if it, if it would be good for the council, what was your question pertaining to this particular item?
We have public comment.
Thank you. You know, I would suggest as a council that acknowledging the budget crisis we're in going forward, I would make a recommendation to city staff that every revenue source that comes before you as a city should not come into consent action. You should look at it and understand what your revenues are. Crown Castle LLC manages, is the largest wireless infrastructure provider in the country. They're in all fifty states. Their stock is worth three hundred and fifty million dollars. They have almost six thousand employees. Their clients are AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon, Sprint. I think you understand that's essentially almost every carrier and subsidiary. I personally live ten houses up from one of these sites. And just a snapshot, these are wireless bobs, I'll call them, that go on top of light posts that the city of Antioch installed. Now, I live ten houses away from one of those facilities, and I've lived in that house since nineteen ninety-six. So that means that my house and my taxpayer, taxpayer dollars specifically have paid for that light post right there at Pruitt Ranch and Forty-Niner. Which I will note, the grade separations in that area, my house, ten houses up from that antenna, sits at grade at the top of that antenna. That light post is down below us at the bottom of a hill. Now, I'm not an expert, but I would imagine antennas should go above you, not below you. And that would probably speak to why my calls have dropped for the last almost thirty years. But all of that aside, why does this matter to the city, even though we're residents and my time is running out? Those four poles are supposedly bringing Crown Castle sixty, roughly sixty thousand dollars annually in revenue. And the original contract way back in twenty twelve stipulated that the city of Antioch would receive five percent of that? Now, I ask you a question. If you're out at sea and you want to watch something on TV, and somebody says, "The only way you're going to watch it is if we put an antenna on somebody else's boat", are you going to just give that boat owner three thousand dollars out of that sixty thousand dollars every year? I don't think so. I would understand what your worth is at those facilities, and I would renegotiate those outdated rates. Seven hundred and sixty-one dollars a year per pole? I pay two hundred and fifty dollars a month for my own cell service.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On this subject, uh, when I read this particular item, I also shared Mr. Becker's, um, opinion that we need to maximize the revenue. So I contacted and had a discussion with the city manager, who asked Mr. Cepeda to, uh, respond, uh, because I felt the same way. I thought, my goodness, you know, we should be making more money than what is being projected. And I have a feeling that you're going to give us the answer.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council. So we're, we're, the FCC actually regulates the rates at which, um, these, uh, rentals can be charged, and it's to, actually, two hundred and seventy dollars is the safe harbor rate that they call it. We're actually getting a lot more for this, for these poles at seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. So we're really limited on what we can charge. I think Crown Castle's giving us a fair price, based on the, on the regulations.
So it's the PUC?
The FCC.
The FCC. So locally, we absolutely have no jurisdiction and cannot negotiate a higher price because of federal and state regulations basically preventing us from doing so.
Right, and outside council has advised us that they, they could actually come back and say, you know, "We're paying you too much, we only have to pay you so much", so I think we're getting a fair price.
I appreciate for your, your immediate response, I, it was, I do appreciate it. Mr. Becker, so your ideology and opinion is shared. Unfortunately, when I got the answer, I didn't like it. But, you know, unfortunately, the city council can't do anything about it due to federal and state regulations. One that's not, uh, F, what is it, FCC?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, all, all I'm saying, I, I think your, your attitude is shared by us, and I immediately caught that, and unfortunately, I didn't like the answer, but that's the answer.
Any other questions or comments from council? Have a motion, please? Alright, we have a motion?
Second.
A motion second, cast your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
Alright, item O, uh, was there a public comment on item O?
Thank you so much, um, and for item O, this is a... Thank you so much. And for item O, this is a acceptance of a funding award for our California Volunteers Youth Service Corps. Montserrat Cabral is here to take any questions on this item.
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Montserrat Cabral, Youth Services Network Manager. Tonight, we are requesting council approval to accept one point seven four million award from the California Volunteers Youth Service Corps, a significant investment in our city's young people and workforce development efforts. This funding will expand the SOAR internship program, previously known as the Mayor's Apprenticeship Program, to support three to four new youth cohorts through December two thousand twenty-six. These are paid meaningful placements designed to serve opportunity youth, including those impacted by justice involvement, foster care, or other barriers to employment. To date, we have successfully implemented four cohorts with a combined investment of approximately one point two million dollars, six hundred and twenty-five thousand in ARPA funds, and another five hundred and forty thousand in Youth Service Corps Award. That investment supported forty-three young adults through paid internships and wraparound services in partnership with just one primary organization, Rubicon Programs. What makes this round of funding even more impactful is that we're not just scaling up within city departments, we're also extending to support our community-based organizations in Antioch, allowing them to build capacity and host interns directly. This expansion not only increases our reach, but also ensures our partners have the capacity and resources they need to successfully host youth participants. For example, Monument Impact, one of the most committed and impactful partners, hired two of our interns last cohort, but was unable to serve as a host site this cohort due to capacity constraints. With this new funding, we'll be able to prevent situations like that from directly supporting CBOs and strengthening our network. I'm happy to answer any questions you or the public may have.
All right, thank you. Public comment, please.
A public comment is from Stinson Willard.
Good evening, city of Antioch. My name is Stinson Willard and I work for the Youth Services Network at the Community Center. And today, I'd like to inform you guys why youth services, among many other programs, are important to not only our community, but the, the next generation to come. Youth services teamed up with the city to help provide youth with exponential opportunities in a stable environment. Most youth like me are looking for not only who they are, but what they are good at. And youth services did not only do that, but it sets the standard for the city and the community in general. And it helps youth like me not only carry theirself outside of a work environment stably, but inside of one as well. Thank you for letting me speak and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have one more public comment. Kevin?
Okay, all right. My name is Kevin Gustavo Roldan, buenos tardes. And I was actually a part of the Antioch Build internship program, which is part of youth services. In recent years, I've become a lot more conscientious about the world around me, my city, and the very city that I grew up in, Antioch. As a drone pilot, I am someone who likes to look at buildings and everything from the air. I've always been interested in how they're built, who makes them, how they're made, the whole process in general. And one of my thoughts in two thousand twenty-four was, can I do something to influence these projects? Or would I just get in the way? But in the lead up to the internship for the Antioch Build internship, honestly, I was just looking for a job in between going to community college at Los Medanos College and then switching over to UC Santa Cruz as a robotics student. And instead of going to just work for Target or some other big box store, I wound up in this internship, which paid myself and other youth to actually go and work for the city. In this case, we worked on an abandoned building in order to revamp it as a youth services center, which just completely changed my entire outlook on how I can influence public opinion and the direction of the city. I was someone who just thought, okay, these people, the council members, they make all the decisions and they don't really listen to us all that much. I've come before you years ago to advocate for bike lanes and I never saw a change. But one of the most important things from this internship was the fact that we were able to put together a presentation. And as a cohesive unit, we were able to show what it was that we wanted to see change in the city. Ultimately, the feeling that stuck with me the most is just how much I was able to involve myself in the process and how much I felt like I was doing something positive to benefit my hometown. And that sentiment was reflected among all of the other youth that were in this program. You had high school students, young college students, all people trying to make a positive difference in this town. The future is in our youth. We need to spend money on them, teaching them and listening to them. So I would argue in an age where we're all being pulled further and further apart, it's more important than ever for these programs to exist. And so I would argue programs like this that Montserrat represents deserve more funding.
Thank you.
We received two additional speaker cards. The first one is from Marone Zudi and the second one is from Antonio Camacho Rico.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Marone Zudi and I'm a proud participant of the Antioch Build program. I'm here today not just as a young adult, but as someone who's directly benefited from the city's investment in youth services. So during this program, we got to reimagine downtown Antioch from a building into a youth services center. And this really affected me about how communities are affected by new developments within, as I said, in our city. As a result of this Build internship, I made the decision to shift my academic focus from engineering to architecture. It was one of the most significant choices I've made and it was inspired entirely by the clarity and confidence I gained during this program. It opened a world of opportunities for me, such as presenting to the city council last year about this proposal and also presenting to the Architectural Foundation of San Francisco with Kevin. And we received a youth award. And, well, it's not just about our accomplishments, but the point was that because of youth services, we got to go to Architectural Foundation of San Francisco. We got opportunities that I wasn't able to receive before. Cutting funding to youth services like Antioch Build doesn't just affect the budget line, it affects real lives. It sends a message to young people that their growth, their future, and their voices don't matter. Programs like Build, the Antioch Council of Teens, SOAR, they are working. I am proof of that. We are proof of that. Please don't take away the chance for young people to experience what I did. Thank you for your time and believing in the future of Antioch. Thank you.
Next speaker is Antonio.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello, council members, and hello, public at large. I believe that funding for youth services is essential. You know, being a, a youth that was impacted by really lack of, of guidance, lack of, of resources, and, you know, not knowing where to go as far as career-wise. So it's like, I remember in high school, Mr. Rocha, you were my principal. I graduated 'oh-seven. And in, in that time, I was looking for all these avenues for guidance and, and, you know, didn't have a lot of support. So I looked at the military. I looked at different things and different, and, you know, the ASVAB. And it was a, a starting point, but had I had more support in that direction, I believe I'd probably miles and, and leaps ahead of where, it, you know, it took me a while to basically get established and, and find a passion. And I believe that these youth services help people explore, especially the youth, explore their passions and, and turn those passions into careers, which will positively impact our society and our community at large. Without these resources, a lot of these youth will get lost. And, you know, the school-to-prison pipeline is a real thing. And as also as a, you know, a justice-impacted individual, I believe in second chances. You know, and a lot of kids that are foster youth, a lot of kids that grew up homeless on the streets or just had no real direction, need that. And it's a much-needed thing. So if we nip it in the bud and kind of guide these youth, I believe we'll be better off as a society at large. Thank you.
I have another speaker wishing to speak on this item. Marina.
Good evening. I remember the last time I was up here, I was a little girl with my mother, Ashley Mahan. Sean Wright was the mayor. I'm an intern under a springboard at the Department of the Unhoused Services with Montserrat. The proposed reconstruction of our community is not beneficial in the way you think it is. The Department of Public Safety and Community Resources is extremely fundamental and essential to the well-being of Contra Costa County. I haven't been to every facility under the PSCR, but I can assure you that they're just as important as our police are. When I attend springboard meetings, I am amazed at the amount of intelligence and concern my peers and elders convey. How can we build a community that's for everyone if it simply isn't for everyone? Without PSCR, there will be less environmental and societal outreach, less youth involvement, less resources for those in need, and more violence. On behalf of everyone who works under the Department of Public Safety and Community Resources, I ask you to please rethink your decision. Thank you.
That is all the speaker cards I have on this item. Jerem Gunter.
Hello, everyone. Mayor, council members, hello to everyone. I'm here just because I want to tell you guys a quick story. Is that okay? So I have been a part of this community for a long time. And I decided that I wanted to really, really do something for this community as I've been a principal in different areas, but I've lived here. So I wanted to really support this community. And I said, you know what, I want to create a youth center for the city. And I went and talked to Kwame at the time and told him my plan. He actually loved it, but we didn't have the funding for it. He said, you know what, there's a program that might be able to help one of your programs at that you want to create at the youth center. So I was able to meet with the youth services department. And they told me they would support one of the programs I wanted to do. So I decided to start something called the Dream Team, a basketball program. And I said, you know what, I want to make this about mentorship. So we are actually the only free AU basketball program in the state of California. And we're completely free out of Antioch. And the reason I'm telling you this is because if it wasn't for the youth service department, we wouldn't even be here for the program that we have. And our program, when I started, I said, it's going to be something small. We're going to get a couple of kids. Now today, this is about two and a half years ago, we have about twenty self-published authors in our group. These boys have wrote their own book. These boys have traveled everywhere. We're going to, actually, next week, we're going to Hawaii with the boys. They do every, every other Friday, we meet at the Antioch Police Department, that they donate their space where we can do manhood development out of, out of the department. And the things that we talk about is accountability, respect, how to talk to your people. We were really trying to build great people and not just basketball players. The reason this is so important is because this would not even be started if we didn't have a partnership with the city of Antioch. I want you to know some of the things that your city is doing, right? We have done some amazing work and it would not be possible. I was, I was blessed enough to be National Coach of the Year this year. And this is out of Antioch. This is, this is a city that we're doing this here, right? And I don't think people realize the, the work that's happening here. Thank you. And I don't think people realize the work that's happening here because we're such a small city, but we're actually national. We're, tomorrow, the whole team is going to the, the Giants game and sitting in Larry Bear's box office. And they're actually going to have us on the, on the field, talking about the work that we've done, talking about Antioch, right? I don't think we know the work that we're doing. And this has literally been in two and a half years. And this would not be possible if it wasn't for this youth department. So I am never, for, I'm not a political person. All I care about is young people, right? I've been doing education for twenty years now, a little bit over twenty years, but I've been principal, vice principal. I support principals now. But my whole focus is really trying to change the narrative of how Antioch looks. And I cannot do it. And it wouldn't be started if I wouldn't have this, this group with me. So thank you to the city of Antioch. Thank you to the youth service department. We really need to keep something like this that really supports the community. Thank you.
Shimon Wright.
Hello, appreciate it. Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Dr. Shimon Wright. I'm the CEO and founder of Bridge Builders to New Generation. Thank you to the Youth Service Network, Department. We've been contracted with the city for the past four years. So I just want to give a little backstory of why I'm here. So I was a teacher in the Antioch Unified School District. I was actually a teacher at Antioch High School when, when Mr. Rocha was the principal over there. And he actually was my principal at Antioch High School as well. So the reason why I'm here, because, the reason why I started Bridge Builders to New Generation is because what I realized to see, what I realized in our community was we were losing a lot of our kids to gun violence in our community. I go to juvenile hall every single Wednesday and I deal with kids who come from the city of Antioch. There's more kids in the city of Antioch that are incarcerated for murder, for robberies, than we have for kids in West Contra Costa. And so by us either dismantling the Youth Service Network Department, it's going to do a lot for the work that we do within the city of Antioch and the reason why we're here. And so for myself, as I deal with these young people, and I'm the voice, and I'm the, the, the voice for our young people, when I, when I tell you I have a story of a young man who's incarcerated right now in juvenile hall, who, I was his teacher at Park Middle School, I was his teacher at Antioch High School, and he's incarcerated for murder, right? And when people look at this young man, they don't see anybody but someone that indulges in criminal activities, right? This young man did not graduate from high school. This young man graduated from high school, actually in juvenile hall. But because he sees me every single Wednesday, because I was the only person that listened to him, because I was the only person that he trusted, he ended up getting his AA from LMC and he's graduating, he's going to go to a four-year university. And this young man gets out of juvenile hall in two thousand thirty-one. And when we went to his resentencing, they asked, the judge said, well, why do you want to go ahead and get your bachelor's? Why do you want to start a mentorship program? Why do you want to speak life into young people? Why do you want to get your doctorate? And he looked back and he said, because my mentor's back there, he looks like me, he talks like me, he dresses like me. Now, the biggest thing was, when he was in school in the city of Antioch, and we had programs like we do now, that we have programs like my, my program right now, this young man probably wouldn't have been incarcerated. This young man probably would have been graduating from a four-year university right now. So the work that we do within the city of Antioch, if we take that away, it's telling me right now, it's a clear-cut identity of what Antioch stands for. And it stands for locking all of these young, unprivileged, black and brown people up, so we don't give them the resources that they need to excel in our community. And we say opportunity lives here, right? And if we, if we're down with that identity of opportunity lives here, we'll give opportunity to every single young, black and brown individual in our community so they can excel in life, so they can be successful. Thank you.
Sandra Trujillo.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Sandra Trujillo. Hello, mayor. Hello, city council members. You know, I, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of RRTH Learning Centers in partnership with Montserrat Cabral and Youth Services. And I had this, you know, this big speech that I wanted to present you guys tonight and, but I just got here and I'm hearing the voices of all these but I just got here and I'm hearing the voices of all these young men and women that are doing amazing things for our city, that I'm proud to, you know, consider myself a proud member of this city, and I'm just listening to them, and I'm thinking, I can't read this speech, I got to speak from the heart. So I just want to say thank you, because you guys have been an amazing, you know, group of people that have been collaborating with RRTH and Youth Services. And I'm just imploring you today, you know, to really, really, you know, I pray for you guys all the time, that you guys make the right decisions, because I'm hearing all the passion from, you know, some of the young people that, you know, are part of these youth service programs, and then to hear from, you know, these amazing other gentlemen that come in and say, hey, look, this is the big things that we are doing in the representation of our community. I mean, I'm just, you know, blown away and just very humbled even just to be here. So I also heard that, you know, we were talking about, like, somebody mentioned that, you know, why do we need to consider, you know, continued support to youth services? Let me tell you that, you know, the reason that you need to continue to do this and support our youth is because, you know, today we're talking about balancing a budget, and I know that, you know, maybe cutting off some of these programs might, you know, might help you do that, and, you know, it's a very difficult task that I understand you have at hand. But if you cut these programs, and you, this might help you today with your, to balance your budget, but, you know, at what cost for tomorrow? Because this is what it's about. Everything, you know, we want, we want a beautiful, safe, and thriving city. Well, this is where it starts. It starts with our youth. So if you invest in the youth today, believe me, you are investing in a brighter and better future for tomorrow. So it starts today. So again, you know, I just, I know you have a difficult, difficult job, each and every one of you. So I am praying that, you know, each and every one of you are Holy Spirit-led. One of the things that, you know, I really admired and really enjoyed about meeting our great Mayor Ron Bernal was that he said something like, you know, I love that Sandro and Margie always have, you know, activities for the youth that really, you know, hit home, and I'm just saying, be Holy Spirit-led. God bless you all.
Thank you.
I do not have any speaker cards left.
All right. Any questions or comments from the City Council?
No, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the comments, and I would move approval of the funding of $1,740,583.66 from the California Volunteers Youth Service Corps.
Motion, a second, please, cast your votes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, and the last item, item P.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. This is Amendment Number Two to the Consulting Services Agreement with Felton Institute for the City of Antioch's Angelo Quinto Community Response Team, changing the terms through August 31st of 2026, as well as the funding source. And while I'm up here, I would like to thank Director Wesley Clark for her great presentation last week to our Antioch Police Oversight Commission. It was wonderful, and we just appreciate the partnership.
Thank you, City Manager Scott. Hi, it's me, Ken. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. This evening, we are bringing forward a second amendment to the city's agreement with Felton Institute to continue operating the Angelo Quinto Community Response Team, AQCRT, a program that has become a cornerstone of Antioch's approach to public safety and community healing. Since its launch, Angelo Quinto Community Response Team has responded to more than 11,500 calls, handling nonviolent, noncriminal emergencies with compassion, cultural responsiveness, and trauma-informed care. This team has not only reduced the burden on traditional first responders, but has built critical trust with some of the most valuable and vulnerable residents. The proposed amendment ensures that this work continues through August 31st, 2026, within the existing ARPA budget, by making strategic adjustments to staffing and service hours for long-term sustainability. No new funding is being requested, just opportunity to responsibly carry out this work forward. We are proud of what this partnership has achieved, and I welcome any questions you or the public may have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this?
Oh, I have three people wishing to speak on this item. First is Leslie May, followed by Robert Collins and Belafonte Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I spoke on this, well, I was attending the budget meetings, and I spoke on cutting the funding, reducing the funding, or reducing the hours of operation then. I do not agree with this. This, along with the APOC Committee, were written in with the agreement with the DOJ. Ever since they were written in, and ever since this new council took over, I'm not going to name names, but someone has deliberately worked to try to usurp, to change APOC to the point of appointing people that are friends of council members, one person choosing who's going to be on the committee, running me off the committee. And so now we're going down to the community response. It was written in there. You don't want that, because we want law and order here. Law and order is the same thing we've been having. We just had a police officer sentenced to seven years in prison, and three more on ankle monitoring today for the crimes he committed here as an APD officer. And what's scary about that is, they said one of the current officers wrote a letter in support of him. So we know there's still some bad apples in the barrel. But betting back to this, you want to reduce them from 11 community resource specialists to six, and it's not going to ensure high-quality timely response coverage while aligning with available resources. Then from 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to 12 hours a day, seven days a week, that is ludicrous. First of all, like I said before, mental health, people with mental, are having a mental health episode, they don't choose the day, the time, to have the thing. They just don't choose it. This can happen at anything. Domestic violence, a person that is a victim of domestic violence might have a complete mental breakdown. We have people here that need the ACQRT, the AQCRT, I'm sorry. And we need them to be covered 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You need to look for some more money to increase their budget, pull it out of some other programs, but stick with what we have that is working, instead of shooting more black and brown people in the back because they're having an episode, choking them to death because they're having an episode, or doing other horrific things that have been done to our residents. Thank you.
Next speaker is Robert Collins, followed by Belafonte Anderson and Antonio.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am actually a behavioral specialist, therapist, actually, for the Felton Institute. I've been working in mental health for about 30 years. I actually worked with Katrina in New Orleans. Been around a little bit, and I'd just like to say that mental health in Antioch is growing, and I'm sure we can see it. When we walk in safe ways, or lucky, so whichever, you see it there, schizophrenia is very psychosis is very serious. We don't actually, first, I'd like to say, I want to thank you for continuing to giving the funding to our program. When you think about it, can you imagine without the program? All the burden that the police officers will have, you know, which, actually, there's other serious matters in town that they can be dealing with, and we actually dealing with this particular type of crisis. Because it is a crisis, a serious crisis. When we look at the whole factor of this situation here, you know, it's, it can be very, it's coming to a point to where it's causing so much dissension in the sense to where it's having people afraid to walk in the stores now. My job is basically, is to, when we go out in the team, when we're out in the field, I meet with a lot of veterans now. And the veterans that I'm working with, with the PTSD that they're dealing with, nobody seems to understand exactly when you sit down and talk to these veterans. And then, you know, the things that they tell you, what's on their minds, is very, very important. That means that we have to make referrals to keep them safe and keep the community safe, because we have a team that's very strong, they're very educated, and they actually have the commitment to go out in the field and make this happen. So, in other words, what I'm really saying is that we need to continue this organization. It's very, very important. The more, actually, we see out in the, what I'm working on right now, actually, I've been thinking, it's going, it's setting up something to go into the schools and talk to the younger population, so hopefully, about mental health. So in that, in that aspect, so hopefully, we won't see a repeat in this in the next 10 to 15 years, because that's what is predicted, is, you know, it's not going to actually get any better. So we trying to make it a strong situation. I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Belafonte Anderson, followed by Antonio Camacho Rico.
Hi, I think that may have been.
Robert Collins.
Yeah, I'm Robert Collins. Sorry, got a little bit out of order.
I apologize.
We may have done that.
Robert Collins.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good evening, Mayor Bernal and City Council. Nice to see you tonight. My name is Robert Collins, and I'm Angelo Quinto's dad, his mom, Cassandra, wishes she could have been here tonight, but she's away, out of town, traveling. I want to thank you for allowing us to contact you independently, and for your advocacy throughout the years, and your ear, as we handle this difficult situations of budget priorities and programs for our community. We know the difficulty of running an ongoing program using one-time funding, and so we want to thank you for continuing the AQCRT Community Response Team, albeit in a more limited form, while looking for collaboration with other mental health, community, and crisis response services, and additional funding. I'd like to thank all of you for your work on this, as well as Chief Virgil and the APD. This is a very important program for Antioch and our community. It's also an important program, because I think, long-term, it leads to budget savings. Not having this promise of policing and having the additional resource for policing is key to keeping our costs down. So from a budgetary perspective and a long-term outlook, I think it's really important that we have, and that the police department has access to these kinds of community programs. So on an ongoing basis, again, I think we really need to figure out how to fund it better and have, Antioch, we've been hearing tonight about leadership in Antioch, and I think the best response to a crisis and a problem is to come out not only better, but actually a leader in that area. And I hope that we can become that. We have been, in some ways, a leader for this county, and I hope we can keep that going forward. But I do want to thank you for continuing to have this program run. I know the budget barriers are difficult when you use those one-time fundings, and for your support throughout the years to make that a reality. Good evening. Thank you.
Antonio Camacho Rico?
Hello, once again, Mayor Bernal and Council member, and public at large. As an individual affected by mental health, I myself have used Felton and other resources, such as CORE, and not just for myself, but when others are in need. And this is, I believe it's key to have these services, because it cuts down on the city's cost. It cuts down on the state's cost, and it cuts down on the nation's cost, because you're not going to have incarcerated individuals when they could have just been treated at a mental health facility, or, you know, being referred to mental health services where they could get the help they needed. See, I didn't know, I had bipolar disorder. I found this out recently when I was like around 26, and it's, you know, it's one of these things that is misunderstood, just as, you know, mental health as a whole is misunderstood, and I believe that it's vital to have these services in place, whether it be Felton or whatever organization, just to have lives saved. And I also want to thank APD, because at one point, they knew me by name. They came to my household that many times. And meanwhile, also, being a professional and having a career and having all these things, it was like, you know, it was a night-and-night difference, and it's like, I couldn't control when my mental health status would change, because it was, it's based on a chemical imbalance in my brain, that just, without medication, without help, without support, out of nowhere, probably not here. You know, so I had to say, it's vital to have these services, because it affects society as a large, and also, you know, it's just, it's vital to, because I know, more likely than not, you know somebody that has been affected by mental health in whatever capacity, if we don't help them, how will we help our society at large? How will we be as a society? How will we be as a city? You know, everything would be in chaos, right? So with that, I thank you.
Thank you.
I do not have any other speaker cards.
Do we have any questions or comments from the City Council?
Thank you, again, for all of the hard work at the Department of Public Safety and Community Resources. Thank you for always showing up. Angelo's mom and dad is always here, been here from day one, since their son had his life taken at the hands of law enforcement during a mental health crisis here in the city, and I think that's not a moment that, I don't think that's a moment any of us are proud of, and you shouldn't have to be here. So I appreciate you continuing to show up and be committed. I think one of the challenges is that we continue to discuss that everything that was funded with ARPA dollars, we would need to find new money. And you got to try something, you got to try something different to know what works. And I think the unfortunate part for the City of Antioch was nobody was willing to try anything new. I don't know if it was because of budget constraints, ideology, traditionalism, backward values, I don't know what it was, but there was no willingness to try anything new, so that we can understand what the holistic needs of the community were. The creation of the Department of Public Safety and Community Resources gave us the opportunity to try something new, like a Angelo Quinto Crisis Response Team, gave us an opportunity to try something new, like services for our young people, to keep them out of incarceration in juvenile halls, and to address mental health issues in the home and the community, to provide greater resources to unhoused residents, right? And I think the challenge is that when we talk about scaling back, scaling back a resource to meet, to meet a mandate, that could become a challenge. I think that also suggesting that a program like the Angelo Quinto Crisis Response Team, which was really modeled after Kahoots, where Council Member Wilson did a lot of research to bring this model to the community, it is absolutely a non-police crisis response. And even the idea that we would even consider a conversation to move the crisis response team under the jurisdiction to move the crisis response team under the jurisdiction of the police department should also not be a conversation that's on the table for various reasons. And so I think, I'm hoping that as a city, we can commit to find dollars to bring the service back to standard. Because what I also know is true, after spending years of working and organizing in cities, is cities scale back programs, hell breaks loose and then we blame the program for not working. And that's not to say that the folks at Felton will, will scale back or not serve the community at, at quality. At any scale, I just think that my call to action would be that we figure out a way to get back to scale. Because the need is great, um, here in the city of Antioch.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree. Thank you, Mr. Collins and your family for constantly coming, uh, not only to us, but also going up to the state and making sure policy was passed. Yeah, I remember taking the, the journey up to Portland, Oregon to, to view this model firsthand. And also to Eugene, seeing this, uh, model firsthand. And I was met with a lot of resistance. All sorts of walls were put up. Oh, we can't do it because of this, we can't do it because of that, when this was a need. This was a desperate need in our city. So I'm glad that we have it here. I understand due to budget cuts, we have to scale back, but I too would, you know, would like to find funding to bring this back up. Um, because a mental, you know, somebody going through a mental health break is not gonna go, oh, I'm not having, uh, it's, I'm not between hours of whatever, so therefore I have to hold on to this. So I'm hoping we can find some funding and we'll work hard to find funding to bring it back to 24 hours. Cause that was the true intention. So, uh, I don't know if I need to make the motion to go ahead and pass this particular item.
Are there any other questions or comments from Council? Councilmember Wilson, if you'd like to-
I'll move approval on this item.
A second.
Motion second, please cast your votes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, do I have a motion to take a 10-minute break?
Move to approve for 10-minute break?
Yeah. All right, we have a motion of a second?
A second.
All right, cast your votes. All right, we will be back at 9:13.
I'm missing one vote.
I'm missing one vote.
One vote. Wait, I'm missing a vote. I need a vote. One vote. I only have four. Okay.
Okay. Time's up voting.
Motion carries to take a 10-minute recess at 9:03 PM.
All right, we are ready to get started back up again. Madam Clerk, can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Torres Walker.
Present.
Councilmember Freitas.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Rocha.
Here.
Mayor Bernal.
Here.
All members present at 9:14 PM.
All right, thank you. We are now on to item number three, public hearing. Uh, this is gonna be, uh, a resolution approving and adopting the five-year capital improvement program, 2025 through 2030. Madam Clerk, could you read the public hearing rules, please?
During public hearings, each side is entitled to one main presenter who may not speak for more than 10 minutes. All other speakers during public hearing items are entitled to a maximum of five minutes. These time limits may be modified depending on the number of speakers or number of items on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. Groups who are here regarding an item may identify themselves by raising their hands at the appropriate time to show support for one of their speakers. During certain types of hearings, the applicant is allowed to give their, their presentation first. After all testimony is received, the applicant has an opportunity for rebuttal. After having heard from the public, the agenda item will be closed. Deliberations will then be limited to members of the City Council.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. So Director Bunting's here to, to talk about it. Thanks so much.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, City Council. Yeah, my name is Scott Bunting. I'm your Director of Public Works and City Engineer, and I also oversee the Capital Improvement Division. So the Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, is a five-year plan developed to guide construction and acquisition of capital improvements for the city of Antioch. The CIP relates the city of Antioch's annual capital investments to a long-term plan for public improvements. The 2429, or 20, excuse me, 2530 Capital Improvement Program was, uh, approved by the Park and Rec Commission, uh, on May 15th and, uh, was found to be consistent with the general plan by the Planning Commission on May 21st. Tonight, staff is recommending the City Council adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2530 five-year capital improvement program and carry over the re-appropriated, the re-appropriate all remaining fiscal year 2425 capital improvement program budget to fiscal year 25, to the 2523, 20, excuse me, 252030 operating budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about the capital improvement program.
All right, thank you. Do we have, uh, an proponent of this item? Do we have an opponent to this item? Do we have any public comment?
Andrew Becker. He is speaking as the opponent.
Thank you. You know, as this meeting has gone on, I'm kind of just going through my phone, trying to get an understanding of what's happening in the region. And once again, you know, I'm concerned for the city of Antioch and, and I understand that I echo everybody's thoughts and feelings, sentiments, but when, and respectfully, when does that work that gets us to that point beyond where we are, um, start? And I don't mean that disrespectfully. I'm just saying, how are we adopting a five-year plan that speaks to impact fees from 2014? How are we adopting a five-year plan that speaks to $30 million new library projects? I mean, new community centers. You just cut funding from the city of Antioch, or you're proposing to cut funding from the city of Antioch's library. We talk about how is there this loss of revenue? I mean, it's in these impact fees. You go through this five-year plan. Impact fees are one of the problems, but when do we get to that point of looking at that fee schedule? Has anybody looked at Brentwood's five-year capital improvement plan? They're building an amphitheater out in Marsh Creek. An organic separation facility that's gonna generate them revenue. Like we stand on a hundred and something million dollar desalination plant? I hate to be that one to say this. We should not be giving ourselves a round of applause anymore. I mean, on homelessness alone, the state of California in the last eight years has spent $37 billion. Do you think your $120 million is a drop in the bucket? Or more than that? Brentwood just got $100 million for that organic separation facility. Same exact way. But the difference is, is that we're not inviting a governor out to walk through a desalination plant and tote about water rights that we've had for so long. Brentwood isn't doing that. They're just updating their fee schedules and making sure that the revenue coming into the city matches the needs going out. I mean, you had a gentleman here talking about how he's bringing youth services to the city. The city of Pittsburgh, as a part of their capital improvement plan, is building Dream Courts. Which was half-funded through- which was half-funded through developer, direct developer contributions. I mean, when you look at our capital improvements list for five years, it's not just dismal. It's sad that a city that is, that is at this size and capacity and is operating a budget of this level is touting adding a signal? That's our major accomplishment in a five-year plan? We're keeping the roads paved? That shouldn't be an ideal. It should be an expectation. Like, we show up time and time and time again as community members and pay our taxes. We try to open small businesses. Some of us try to collaborate and stakeholder engage larger businesses. Brentwood is committing twenty million dollars to a Lone Tree Way expansion that's going to bring in business. I'm sorry, over to the Innovation Center near the streets of Brentwood. Twenty million dollar infrastructure program that's going to bring in business. And I've got the owner of Savers calling me, saying, "How can we get Savers to come back in to your old big lots?" And there's a fire burning adjacent, and who's going to handle that? I mean, I will take my full ten minutes tonight because we spent so many, so many study sessions, so many hours as community and council members and staff coming together to talk about these problems. And then even here tonight, as the youth showed up who are now gone and had their voices limited through reducing their speaker time. Of all nights, when community residents showed up to talk to you about what their thoughts and concerns were, you said, "I want to speak. I don't want to listen." A hundred and how much million dollars, and you don't want to stay here till one o'clock tonight? I would stay till three. I would stay till tomorrow, the next day. I would camp out front until respectfully, we got our act together here in this city. Because this isn't cutting it. And I'm getting tired of hearing, "We're going to have these conversations, and we're going to get to this point." You spent how many million dollars renovating this establishment that you then locked the doors to and don't invite community members and advocates and engage, and individuals that engage you to come in here and help you find solutions as you say that you have a capacity issue and can't find those solutions yourself? So where does that leave us? Are we in a circle? Are we in a cycle? Because I know tomorrow that my family has to go to the store here. And I know that there are kids that need to go to school. Has anybody looked at the basketball courts at Deer Valley High School outside? I hope no kids are out there playing because those cracks in that asphalt and the weeds growing through is a tripping hazard. And I wonder how many staff members or individuals tonight would hear me say that and say, "That's a USD's problem." No, it's not. It's our community's problem. They have a revenues problem, just like you do. You are approving projects that are going to bring in ten, fifteen percent more residents to this city while that school district has unfunded mandates on their properties. Who's having those conversations? Developers, and Councilmember Freitas has spoken on this in the past. Developers have a responsibility in this city to meet the needs that your government cannot. This is nothing new. This is the same it is here. It is the same it is in Washington. It is the same it is in Nevada, in Oregon. But here in Antioch, we somehow seem to forget that, and we think we need to reinvent a wheel. I'm going to tell you all, you don't need to reinvent a wheel. You need to go out and look at other wheels out there. And then you need to engage those wheels and say, "How can we bring this to Antioch?" Because you're not alone in that need. Vallejo completely missed out on Home Key because they couldn't get their act together. We barely made it because, thank God, we have a city manager who came to us at the right time and had the right ambition. So capitalize on that. Capitalize on what your staff can do. But remember that they work at the direction of the council. So stop looking at staff reports as the direction for the city of Antioch and start thinking as visionaries for how you can innovatively bring dollars into this city. It's frustrating. Nowhere in that five-year plan, and I'm a bit emotional because nowhere in that five-year plan is even the animal shelter mentioned. And I have a colony at the feet of my house. And I brought little eight-week-old Dutch today with his upper respiratory infection to the animal shelter. And he will be put to sleep because there's no space for him. But we decided decades ago that we had a responsibility for our animals. Thank you.
I do not have any speaker cards on this item.
All right. Any questions or comments for staff?
A question for Mr. Bunting. We discussed this a little bit earlier today, but if you go to, I guess, on the, in your report, it's I sixteen, the page that says, "Projects Added to the CIP." So I'm looking at this list, and I get roadway improvements and some of the other things. Are these projects that are already in process? Have they already been funded? Are there, are these grant projects? Are these projects that have to happen in the, in the next fiscal year?
So there's a large variety of projects that we're looking at on this sheet. Some are grant-funded. The roadway improvements are funded. The irrigation control or upgrades are important. These are, these are things that have been added. If we're looking at just added to the capital, are we looking towards general fund projects? What is?
How many of these impact the general fund?
I need to go through. I believe that there's some general fund money in the playground replacement program. I would have to dig down to go through and see if there's any general fund contributions on any of those projects.
Because I was just curious. Like I said, like, I understand the roadway improvements, which I'm glad to hear you said that those are, those are already grant-funded?
They're, no, they're funded by, they're funded by us.
By us, okay. But I just had some questions and maybe it's a conversation with the rest of the council on these items. I just need to know where they were in the process and then what was, you know, obviously, you just said irrigation control upgrades are very important. But just wanted to kind of bring this up as a question to you and possibly a discussion amongst council.
There was some items that we discussed at the end of the last budget session that were brought up by the Finance Director. In my opinion, there's, there's some good projects there. What we have is what we need to get done, but we do work at whatever direction the council would like to give.
And these need to get, the ones, these all need to get done within the next, this next fiscal year coming up?
They won't get done. I can tell you that a likelihood of all three of those roadway projects getting done this fiscal year, they might not all get done. We'll try to do the best that we can to get these projects out. The intent is to get them out and get them completed as soon as possible.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just thought this was a possible discussion.
Yes, Councilmember Freitas.
Well, this is kind of parallels discussion about the pavement management program. A lot of times, items get on this list because council members specifically advocate for it. And, you know, we have a list, a whole program, that some are just pie-in-the-sky projects and that we have not taken a real critical view, in my opinion, both general fund-funded projects as well as revenue from other resources. And I realize we've just gone through six months of going through this budget, and we're not going to really be finished. It's going to be an ongoing process. But frankly, I think that the whole CIP is one of those items that we literally could go, and there are a lot of items, one by one, and say, "Do we really, is this still valid today?" Some of these projects have not been built for years. So the question is, why do we have, why do we even have on the list? Is it a safety issue? Is it a preference? Will it help economic development? You know, or was it some neighbor complaining to a council member, and somehow it gets on the list? So frankly, and I've, when I served originally ten years as council member, ate as mayor, you know, I brought issues back then. Why are these specific items on the list? And they're really, and a lot of these, they're really not, in my opinion, valid reasons. So I think personally that this is one of those items that we truly need to spend a lot more time. Yes, I understand it's tedious. Yes, I understand it takes time. But if the CIP is not realistic, if it had, if there are projects that have not been built for years, then we have to ask ourselves, is it still valid to have it on the CIP? I mean, I think we really need to define, you know, what gets funded and what does not get funded. Just because it looks good or there's been complaints, somehow getting it added does not always make sense. So from my review on this, you know, I, I could go through, you know, probably fifteen different items, but I'm not going to take the time to do that because I think it's a more comprehensive conceptual issue for the city council. It's a policy issue. And, you know, we, we pretty much, staff grinds this out every single year, gets it to us. You know, a lot of time, energy, and effort goes into it, but in some respects, it's not a very good planning document. I mean, the question is, what do we as a council want to achieve? I can tell you, for me, one of those priorities is economic development. And we don't really spend a lot of money in the CIP for economic development. We don't. It's pretty, a lot, it's pretty much basic infrastructure. And so, yeah, I'm going to vote for it, but, you know, reluctantly, because frankly, Mr. Mayor and Council, this is one of those items, so much time, energy, and money is spent. And I'm not sure that we really are very effective with the dollars that we spend. That's my personal opinion, but that's how I feel.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Torres Walker.
Thank you. You work so hard, and I like seeing that.
Well, with that being said, I'm not alone with this. This whole capital, we couldn't do it with the other departments. We work hand-in-hand with them all. They, they provide us with the, with the, with the information. They work with us, all of the department heads and all of the departments. This is really a group effort. The capital, we're kind of putting it together and putting it out. So I'm sorry if it's not the, it is a good document. It has a lot of good projects in it, and it's a group effort with the city, and I'm proud of it, and I'm proud of what, what we do as staff.
Yeah, I'm hoping with the general plan update, there will be some more specific North Star around economic development and infrastructure in this city that could lead to economic development. We can't go back to two thousand and three, so we got to figure it out, obviously. I did want to say that as far as the roadway projects, it seems that James Donlin Traffic Common is funded through gas tax, Sycamore Traffic Common is funded through gas tax, and West Ten Street Traffic Calming is funded through gas tax. None of these were pet projects of council members. Residents came to the council and said, "We need to slow people down on West Ten Street because it's becoming dangerous." We had children killed on Sycamore. And we've had many traffic incidents as well as a handful of deaths on James Donlin. And I think that I, I guess I'm just wondering, like, can you explain a little bit more to me the, the gas tax? And like, where does it come, where does it come from?
So the gas tax is money that comes to us from, from the sale of gas. The city gets a percentage of the gas tax, and then it gets to go, that money is designated for, for our roadways or roadway-related facilities. It's, it's very, it has less restrictions on it. We've talked about Measure J money. We've talked about SB one money. Those seem to have a little bit more restrictions. Gas tax money that comes to us does allow it to be used a little bit more towards staffing as well as other roadway improvements. And right now, the council has chosen to fund these three projects.
It's a little, a little bit more flexible than others, like special funds.
If you're looking at, say, the three basic roadway funds we have, we have gas tax, we have Measure J, and then you have the RMRA SB one. The latter of the two have a few more restrictions on them. Much like tonight, we came with the list of projects for RMRA. The gas tax is a little, it's easier to, it's easier to use, a little bit more flexible, probably a little less reporting and letting people know exactly what it's going to go for initially. So it does allow some flexibility. It does basically fund our Streets Department as well as projects.
Yeah, I just, I think for, just for like information purposes, if, I know most people don't have time to look through these large documents, but if you look through the entire document, it actually tells you where the funding is coming from. It tells you if the project is initiated or not. It tells you if the project is currently unfunded and needs to be funded. All of the information is in front of you if you have time to actually look at the document. Last time I looked at this document, I don't know if it, it's probably changed a little bit since the last time it was presented. There were over twenty-six unfunded capital improvement projects in this document, twenty-six that I could see. And I believe I counted about, and I, and I could be, could be wrong, twenty-three projects that were specific to District One, which has old infrastructure, Wi-Fi sucks, like calls drop, everything. So I think like, when I'm looking at, and not all twenty-two of those projects that were related to District One, not all twenty, twenty-two to twenty-three were unfunded, but I believe some were. And I think we had that discussion the last time we reviewed the capital improvement project list where the council decided that those unfunded projects probably weren't necessary and people weren't in agreement with them. Like, the park at the BD lumberyard project. So, I mean, I, I just wanted to, really, I don't have a lot of other questions. Just wanted to know about the gas tax. Obviously, I'm never going to become an electrical car driver, so if I'm going to keep buying gas, I want my money to go to preventing children and, and people from being killed on our streets because we, we don't have great traffic calming measures and, and poor traffic infrastructure in the city, so, yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to, it's a large document and the information's there, but there are a lot, a number of projects that seem like they're extremely outdated or at least, why haven't they happened already? And if they haven't happened, do they really still need to be on the list? I'm assuming that when we, because I'm going to support this, the authorization goes to the city manager, and then there's like, I would imagine, there's like a priority of how, which programs will move forward, which ones may not, which ones may be taken off? You know, maybe you can share something about that.
I can take that.
Or you can. I just would like to know what the process is for going through this document. It has some archived projects and that may not be of much value today as they were at one time. I know that talking to District Two residents, you know, obviously, street calming, James I know that, talking to District Two residents, you know, obviously, street calming, James Donlin is, is one that comes up. And I know when I was principal at High School, we had some tragedies of young people losing their lives on that road. So obviously, that, to me, is a, is a priority. When I speak to members, especially seniors that live in District Two, Mira Vista, Gentry Town area specifically, lights, we've talked about street lighting and updating the street light, and I know it's going to go in phases. I'm hoping those type of projects have a priority to them and they're not behind something that's been there for some time that maybe is not as important. So, I was just looking for some information on how this is going to roll forward. Once we give authorization, if that's what happens tonight, how will we proceed forward in identifying which projects are of most importance and which ones maybe can be taken off or put back?
So, projects basically, when, when this is approved, there will be, there will be projects funded for this fiscal year. Any, any number of those projects we'll look to put out. In terms of priority, if there was something that's in there that council would like to see us move forward quicker, we can adjust. But really, we have the, this gives us the, the ability to, now there is funding for projects, some are easier to get at, some, some need a quicker turnaround. But in terms of the actual priority of what is going to happen at what time, it's pretty much staff is working on that. The, the number of projects that are funded are, is what's being shown in the CIP. If there's something within the CIP that council may want, then we should, the discussion should be had to get some direction over to staff to maybe go in that direction or, or lean towards one project before another one. But for the most part, there's funded projects. The goal is to work through them. Sometimes staffing can be an issue with stuff. Sometimes projects can be harder. But if there is ever anything on this list, just because we're here tonight getting this approval, this isn't the only time that we can talk about this, either through the city manager or at council. Projects within it that maybe seem like they're obsolete or hadn't been worked on, if we haven't caught it right now, we come every year and we can have these discussions also. And there, there could be reasons why projects have been delayed. There could be things that are just getting pushed back that, that are done. And maybe we are missing the market, some projects that are there that aren't done. The other thing that's been said is the amount of unfunded projects. That's changed back and forth to kind of what the council really wanted to see in the CIP. The unfunded projects are unfunded, they're in there, at least that lets people know that these projects have been thought about, but they're not funded. But it's something that staff might want or somebody might want in there. That's how we're doing it right now. Years past, those unfunded projects didn't really get into the CIP. So the current way is to put it out there so that everybody is aware of what's been talked about. Some may not be funded. The projects that we're seeing unfunded today may next year become a priority. So at least it's there and it's still, it's still in our face when we look at the CIP.
Yes.
I just want to continue this discussion. So are there objective criteria to determine if a project should even go or not go? I mean, do we say, you know, of the monies that we receive, you know, maybe twenty percent should go to economic development, twenty percent, thirty, whatever, should go to road, roadways? I mean, there's really no criteria, objective criteria, to man, to decide. It's really the council, the public screaming, ranting and raving about a particular item, and all of a sudden, that item goes from the back to the front. And some very deserving projects are moved down the list. It's a very politicized process. There are not, there really isn't objective criteria. Or if I'm wrong, tell me, how, where are these objective criteria to, to look at the specific projects?
You're correct. It, it is based on, we try, we're, we try to be more proactive than that. If we see that there's a problem, hopefully we can jump on it as staff and, and get a project moving forward. Sometimes they're developed that way, sometimes they are developed through council. The idea of how do they get in the CIP, yearly, we put out, we put out memos to everybody, rest of the departments come back with what they would like to see. They should come back with a project, a scope and a funding source that we would be able to put in the CIP. And then that's presented to council to whether or not that's something that you guys would like to fund or like to see in the CIP. And right now, we're only on a one-year, we're only on a one-year budget.
It, it's not a staff issue, it's a council issue. It's a policy issue. And there really is no criteria driving the decision-making, except for loud voices, you know, pounding at the, the podium, screaming, things of that sort. And that's not a way to plan. That's not a way to execute. You know, one of the things that I think is a disadvantage with district elections is that we suddenly talk about only our district. Now, one of the things of the Contra Costa Transportation Authority that I was a member for eight to ten years, is that the eleven members that are there, why they come from specific cities or the county, the number one objective is what, with limited resources, where can we be the most effective? And that's what drives the, the decision-making at CCTA. I was there for ten years. And so, but that's, and I think that was a great way of deciding, with scarce dollars, we have to some way determine what our priorities are versus irate citizens or neighborhoods or district directors. And that's my problem with it. And, and, you know, frankly, the CIP was almost the last item after six months. Everybody was tired. And yet, it is so critically important to our economic well-being, to quality of life, to, to safety, education, so on and so forth. That's the problem. It's not staff. I mean, you're doing the best job you possibly can without any objective criteria. I'm complaining about the policy part.
And I wanted to say, I like, appreciate the conversation. And I think that Director Bunting and RW Director Zapata, they have been doing this for a long time. And I think there are things that are automatic. So when we've talked about this in the past, we have talked about whether there's a legal requirement somewhere or statutory requirement. We have talked about public safety and health impacts. And we've talked about infrastructure conditions and risk of failure. So they weave it into, I think, when they say this is a priority, when we're having our one-on-one meetings and our department meetings, so it doesn't always come to the top as a written checklist. But in their, you know, I think, subject matter expertise, experience as public safety director, or public works directors, they do have, I think, unofficial criteria that we talk about. So making it official and then cross-referencing it with this council's priorities is something that we do need to have a conversation about. So they're, they are not being remiss or, or missing the bottom line. I think they do have subjective criteria, objective criteria and legal criteria. So I just want to set the record straight on that.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions through the city manager. So on, on the, on the item that Councilmember Wilson mentioned, the playground replacement program for the million dollars, that was a, a added project that shows that it's unfunded for the next five years, just runs out unfunded. And so, I guess the, back to what we're all talking about, the question is, should we even have that in there if it's, if it's, if it's unfunded for five years? Or should it be some sort of maybe a placeholder? I, I think it gives the wrong impression if I read this, read this capital improvement program, if I see the one million dollars as an added project and then go and see that it's unfunded, it, it leads me to believe, well, why did we put it in the, in the list in the first place? So, and I, and I don't remember council having asked for that necessarily, and maybe I missed something when we were talking up here.
So we put that in the CIP because we wanted to let all you know that this is a liability out there. There's several playgrounds that need to be replaced, they're in dire need, and it's a liability issue. That's the cue for the council that this is needed, but it's unfunded. I mean, same thing with the irrigation controllers. There are controllers that are over twenty years old, they don't even make these controllers anymore. We're going to be in a situation where we won't even be able to get parts to replace this. This is why we're putting it out there, that we need funding for this.
Yeah, so I think, I, I think that just needs to be more clearly communicated to council if there's a health and safety issue that we need to address. And what parks are the priorities, then it would be good to have that listed and we can always come back to that.
Yeah, I think it's what I explained. So if it's in here, it's not on accident. But we can make it clear and tell you what the criterion thresholds are and how close we're getting and forecasting out is what they're doing. But yes, we can change the report structure.
Right. And, and, and just, just so that we don't have liabilities out there that we just see as unfunded and aren't, aren't addressing. The, to, to one of the speaker's questions or comments is about our AB sixteen hundred, our development impact fees. You know, they go back to two thousand and fourteen. So what is the plan for updating those fees?
The, the plan is to get them updated this year. We've had some staffing issues, some turnover, and, and the hope is, we've been looking at those, we do realize that they do need to be updated, and the hope is that they're, that's going to happen during the next year.
Okay. And then I, my last question, because I don't want to belabor this, but there's a lot of projects that were on the, this year's CIP that were not initiated. And I know it's a capacity issue. So what, I, I think, I think what would be good is if we move projects that we're not realistically going to be able to get to, move them out so that there isn't this expectation that all these things will be addressed, or maybe that there's a priority so that we can understand what is going first, second, third. And I look at, for example, the traffic calming is a good example, you know, I think it said work's been started on one of them and a couple of them haven't been initiated. So to the extent that that was probably brought up a year ago or so, you know, folks are probably thinking that's going on and now it's being moved. And I don't even know where that's going to fall in priority for next year, because I know staffing is a, is a challenge to design and, and deliver these projects.
And, and that's it. It, it is a little bit of a staffing issue trying to get these, trying to get the projects out. But we are trying to do the best we can, hit the ones that are on the top, trying to spend the money on the roadways and do those sort of things. The project that we're showing as unfunded, again, it's the style. If we'd like to show them, it's like Carlos was saying, what is there, i- is, is it a key for council to see that it's unfunded and so that we have a project in the future? Or is it something that is, just doesn't necessarily make sense because it's not in the CIP without any funding? So again, something that we can have more conversation about, probably on the next round, if we want to move those things. The projects that we're showing right now, we're going to try to get to what we can. I do realize that, that we kind of got balled up. I brought on a new engineering technician on Monday. We're hoping to get some more engineers on board and maybe be able to turn out some more projects. So having the flexibility is good, but I do not want the council to have unrealistic expectations that everything that you see for fiscal year twenty-six is going to get done. But it is funded and it does allow us the flexibility to get to it if something happens and there's a priority for one project, or it's just, we're able to get to it. That's kind of why it's there, but I understand what you're saying. I, I think in the future, bless you, that it would be best to, to spread those out a little bit, because we do have a little bit of a logjam at the current fiscal year.
Yeah, so I just, I just think that, you know, not waiting until next year, but coming back maybe in a couple, couple of months and taking a look at this, maybe in as far as what are the priorities that, that staff has established and then see how they line up with, with what council believes is important and then how the funding is going to occur. I just think that that's, that's something because just to have the uncertainty or, or not knowing what's going next and when we can expect it to be delivered is, is, we, we just need to have a better, better idea.
I think that's an excellent idea. I would look forward to that.
I have a question of council. So this is a public document. And if we have, you know, items on here and they're primarily for safety on a roadway or something, and we have had it on there for a couple of years, unfunded, 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 and a horrible accident happens, does, does the CIP become a document in discovery that, you know, a lawyer may say, well, they knew it was an issue. I mean, here's, here's the CIP, you know, it was supposed to be a safety issue, a safety, you know, problem that should have been taken care of. I'm just, I'm just curious, you know, about liability and having a public document identify, yes, there's a safety issue and we didn't do anything about it for several years.
Liability in that situation is what we call a dangerous condition case. So we're only liable to the extent there is a dangerous condition of public property. The, what is a dangerous condition of public property is a legal term that has a lot of statutory text and court cases interpreting it. So first, someone would have to show that there is a dangerous condition. And a, a, a CIP would not, a, a dangerous condition's pretty specific. You know, it's, it's not just, we need, you know, we need to fix this road generally, or we need to build this generally. It's, there was a, you know, inundation in the road, or there was a curve in the road, or the road went up and it was dark. So I'm not really sure if a CIP is going to reveal a dangerous condition. Then the question is, is there notice of the condition? And that's based, usually looks at, is there awareness of the issue? So if, if something's gone into the CIP, you know, I think we know about it. But I, I question whether you could really get to the level of granularity that would be needed to establish a dangerous condition simply by pointing to something in a CIP.
And the example of Councilmember Torres Walker, let's just say James Donlin, and there is a history of accidents and people dying. And, you know, it's repetitive in some fashion. It's like, kind of negligent, from my perspective.
But it has to be, but, but, but in a dangerous condition case, it's not just the road. You have to find a specific feature of the road. So in a road case, dangerous condition's typically a curve. So, you know, curve, where there's limited visibility, those are cases, sometimes going up, if you can't see what's coming at you because of the grade of the difference between where someone is and the height that you're going up or, or down. So that's my point is, what is a dangerous condition typically is very specific. And so if you just say, well, in this stretch of James Donlin Road, we've had X amount of accidents over the years, if those accidents all occurred because of one feature, you know, then, then that might be an issue. Yes, yes.
All right, that's what I was worried.
Couple other questions. So on the, on the Peru Water Park Peak Structure remediation, I think, I think we heard that that project's like three million dollars. And in the CIP, it just shows three sixty, three hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Yeah, we're actually in the spot that we're looking at running a master plan, having somebody take a look at Peru Peak. We can probably redo all those. That figure there was probably for the initial look at. We're still trying to figure out what's going on there. Now it does need to be completely rebuilt, so that dollar figure would go up if it was constructed.
Yeah, I, I would just recommend changing that to what we think it is, you know, three million, as opposed to having this lower number in there, because as we're looking through this document, to be able to identify what our future liabilities are, that's, that's a big delta there.
And show that as unfunded.
Yeah, enjoy it, obviously, yeah, as unfunded. And then the other one, what is the status of the Contra Loma Estates Park?
It's going good, actually. Things are in place. We have a little electrical work that needs to be done, and then the sod goes in. So we are looking to get this thing wrapped up pretty quickly. I don't have a completion date, but I'm expecting it to happen soon. I'll work with the city manager and get a date. I know it'd be nice to get a ribbon cutting out there, get some people out there. But it's coming along quite good. Park looks great. It, it, it's turned out well. It's now just getting finished.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be great to get it open this summer for kids to play on and families and stuff, so that'd be good. And then, just real quickly, Brackish Water Desal Plant, can you give us a quick?
Another fabulous project. We're, we're going good at it right now. The water currently that we have in the river has a very low conductivity, low salt content, so we don't have to use the bracket system. We're still able just to use conventional treatment. But the plant itself is going along fine. The infrastructure's in place, looking at setting a seven-day test. Basically, I'm assuming that things, by, say, September, it'll be ours, but that's following a seven-day test and then a sixty day after that. So if we do a seven-day test, maybe within the next couple of weeks, then that leads to a sixty-day test that leads us to September, that it would be, say, operational in ours. It's coming along good. Currently, the works, the, the work that we're doing right now is over at Delta Diablo, working on the connection with them, working on the agreements with them, just kind of strengthening our partnership that we have with the district.
Okay. And, and then the, there was a, there was an item at PD to, for a storage facility, I believe, and, and the cost was, I think the estimate here was three hundred thousand, but I thought the cost was quite a bit less than that to construct that, that facility that was going to save us, save us on our storage costs. It was something we wanted to kind of get started on.
Yes, under, understood. It's in there, the cost-wise, it was something that we had worked with the police department when we got the estimate. I think things might have changed a little bit. We'll be able to get a, a better handle on the scope. I know exactly what you're talking about. Basically, we're looking for a modular or a building that can be set outside of the PD, hold the be set outside of the PD, hold the investigation, so that way we can store there, and then, and then proceed with the remodel of the investigation portion of the, of the PD. So I will look into that further, work with the PD. I think they had something in mind, and try to see what that cost would look like, and try to get that thing moving forward.
Okay. And then the, the L Street project is?
For that one, I believe the cost was about $300,000, or you, you asked, you thought it was lower? Because we would recoup the cost at $70,000 to $100,000 in a couple of years, so it's about $300,000.
Yeah, I thought it was two years worth of storage.
Captain Bittner, our chief adding team, can speak to this.
Yeah, no, no worries at all. Yeah, the cost is right around $300,000. We, it, rough numbers. It really depends on the size, the quality of the, of the building. And then we're looking at some, a modular building. Public Works had a similar rebuild recently after a fire. Something like that would be ideal. We just don't know the, the overall cost, but roughly $300,000. At the end of, end of the day, it'd save us a lot of money, because we're spending roughly, I'd say, anywhere from $30,000 to $40,000 a year on evidence storage, and that would eliminate those costs over the long, long haul.
Okay. I thought, I thought there was a shorter return on that, but that's, that's fine. Thank you. And then, Scott's my last question. L Street project, it shows that the whole thing is projected to be completed in '26. Is that, is that true, or in your estimate? Because it looks like it got pushed, like $15 million got pushed in the next year.
Yeah, it got pushed back. So basically, the first phase, the phase, the north and south portions, from Ninth Street to the river, and then Sycamore to the freeway, project's been awarded. It's a, it's EE Gilbert. We're looking through the submittals. We're looking to get that project going as soon as possible. The second phase, having some conversations with UP Railroad. That's part of the area that we have to go underneath, so there's some conversations with that. The design itself is, is coming along fine, but we do have some issues, like I say, trying to deal with some right-of-way. My hope would be that the design happens within the next year, and that we do get construction going. Construction complete by '26, might be optimistic for, for both phases, for the entire phase. I would say '26, the first phase, will definitely be done. I would say probably another year after that would be the second phase.
All right.
The widening and, and the major, major work.
Sure. And then something that council member Torres Walker's mentioned in the past, that I think we, we need to be looking at going, going forward, is things like A Street, for example, you know, and what we can do to re, redevelop that street, so that our entries into downtown are, are looking, looking a little bit better, so.
I, I agree. And, and those are, as, as you know, they're major projects to go in there, constructing media and bringing water. I agree that it would be great to do the beautifications. It's something that we can continue to look into. I think it would be a great idea.
Okay.
And I think that's what you mean in terms of the priority conversation that needs to be had. And I do want to make sure to go back to Captain Bittner's, the facility. The hard cost in terms of the structure is one thing, but there are a lot of staff time driving to get evidence in back. So just want to say that, that's a bigger recruitment than the hard, the $30,000. It's more than that.
Yeah. Okay, good. Any, anybody, any other questions, or anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Please catch your votes.
Motion carries four one with Councilmember Freitas, voting no.
Thank you, Director Bunting, for that. All right. We are now on to item number four, and I'm going to read the, the title of this, because we are going to be acting as, we're acting as a six, okay, so this is Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Standing Committee Recommendations for Fiscal Year '25 through '30, Contra Costa Consortium Consolidated Plan, '25-'26 City of Antioch Action Plan for Expanding Federal Community Development Block Grants, CBG Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Funding, State Permanent Local Housing Allocation Funding, and Local Housing Successor Funding. So when we, when we read the resolution to adopt this, just make sure we read how we're acting, what body we're acting as.
Thank you so much. And I just want to make sure that you all know that the Mayor Protim Rocha and Councilmember Torres Walker spent a lot of time on the CDBG committee, rating, reading all the applications, and, and all this. I appreciate Ms. House for her facilitation of the conversation, and she will walk us through. I mean, you can ask questions.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, City Staff, and Members of the Public. Is it on?
Thank you. Good evening. Oh, yes. Mayor, City Councilmembers, City Staff, and Members of the Public. Before you this evening are the recommendations of the CDBG Standing Committee for funding the 2025-2026 One-Year Action Plan, which is the first year of the 2025-2030 Consolidated Plan. The recommendations are the culmination of staff and the committee work over the past one and a half years to assess and respond to the community's needs. Efforts included the analy- anal- analyzing many different data sources, obtaining resident feedback through resident surveys and interactive public meetings, developing priorities for funding, soliciting applications to meet the needs, rating and ranking the applications to ensure that they serve the highest priorities, and now recommending funding to the City Council tonight. Much of this work was done in collaboration with the cities of Pittsburgh, Concord, and Walnut Creek, the County of Contra Costa, and the housing authorities of Contra Costa and Pittsburgh. These cities and the county comprised the Contra Costa Home CDBG Consortium, and worked in partnership to develop the 2025-2030 Consolidated Plan. This plan and each of the individual city and county action plans will be submitted to HUD by the consortium on July the 10th for review and approval. Although the consolidated plan spans the next five years, the President's proposed budget calls for the elimination of the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG program, after this year. Staff will be keeping a close eye on the federal budget process. The city and its nonprofit agencies we partner with depend on these funds to improve the quality of life for our lower-income neighbors. The hard-working CDBG committee, as our city manager said, for this process was comprised of Councilmember Torres Walker, a continuing member of several years, and Mayor Protim Rocha, who became a new member in January. After reviewing an extensive amount of information that had been gathered, the committee adopted the following strategies: To increase affordable housing by both increasing the amount of housing for lower-income and special-needs populations, and maintaining and preserving affordable housing; to provide services for unhoused residents, which includes both shelter and supportive services, as well as homeless prevention and rapid rehousing; to provide a variety of public surfaces with the highest priority given to those with the greatest needs, and those with the lowest income levels of 0% to 30% of the area median income, and those between 30% and 50% of the area median income. Public service priorities include safety net services for those most in need, services for disabled persons, seniors and frail elderly, and persons who are victims of domestic violence, and services that assist youth who are, who have been or, or who are at risk of being abused and neglected. The committee prioritizes economic development activities as well, not to exceed 15% of the grant, and focusing on support for the development of small businesses referred to as microenterprises. Infrastructure improvement in lower-income areas and public facilities activities that serve those who are homeless are important, and affordable housing activities prioritized over infrastructure and public facilities. Finally, recommendations also include administration of all community grants, programs, and funding, as well as priorities for fair housing and tenant landlord services to ensure that the city remains compliant with both federal and state funders, and our obligations in the housing element, and the MTC ABEG Transit Oriented Communities Plan, and of course, our federal obligation in the Consolidated Plan. The recommendations before you total $2,369,318, and consist of Antioch CDBG allocations for this year of $911,040 for '25-'26, residual CDBG funds of $346,307, energy efficiency community block grant funds of $82,807, permanent local housing allocation funds of $509,164, and housing successor funds of $500,000. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you or the public may have.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we do. I believe we have five speaker cards. The first one is Ann Rickson, followed by Catherine Mason, and Rika Davis Sheard.
The first two, I believe, left.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rika Davis Sheard. As you all know, I am the founder and executive director of Share Community. Share Community applied for the CBDG funds, and we appreciate the opportunity to be funded. You know, CBDG, for a long time, left a sour taste in my mouth, because when we first started our nonprofit, I had just missed, missed the grant cutoff for it. And it is a, it's a big cycle, so you have to wait five years in order to reapply. But it was very serendipitous, as I reached out to Terry and was like, almost crying, telling him that I missed it, and we were a new nonprofit. She actually pointed me in the direction of a shower trailer that was available, and it was through the connection that she had with White Pony Express, which we were able to purchase our shower trailer and have now done the work. And so, you know, I'm excited to report that with that trailer, thank you, Ms. Terry House, with that trailer, we have given 7,598 showers to over 500 people in the city of Antioch. And so I, I, I don't think that one can truly appreciate what it means to have a shower unless you've gone without one. I don't know if any of you go camping, but I like to camp, like, in a tent, not an RV, okay? So when I go camping, you know, up, it was up until a couple of years ago that I, I was like, just roughing it, not having a shower, you know? I, I finally bought, like, a pop-up shower with a little thing that I could, it's, it's not only, it's not only makes you feel like you're not a part of this society anymore. Like, when I was out camping, and I didn't have a shower for days, I was like, "Well, I can't go back like this." Like, even going to town, because I forgot, you know, I didn't, I ran out of eggs was hard, because I'm like, "Oh, I gotta go there looking like this," you know? Because you're not a part of society when you don't look like you're a part of society, right? And so having a shower for folks means the world to them. And it allows opportunities that we don't, that we all take for granted, like going inside of a store, and being welcomed inside of that store, and being served inside of that place, instead of being asked to leave. Not only do we get to give showers to folks, but we also get to provide a place for people to actually belong. In a city where they're being asked to leave, or they're being swept from place to place, or they're being, just moved down the road, and then moved down the next road, and then moved down the next road, and just setting them back weeks and months and years by moving them all over the place arbitrarily, but having a place to actually belong is what we have the opportunity to do. And with these funds, we can do more of that. So I just want to say thank you.
All right, thank you.
The next speaker card I have is for Leslie May, but she is no longer here, and Antonio Camacho Rico.
I'd just like to, well, again, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members, and the public. I think that these grants are essential, you know, for the most vulnerable populations that we have, which is senior citizens and also lower-income people, because they're, they're a pathway for stability. They're also to protect. So also, there's, there's less public safety issues, there's less crime, and there's less social issues, as it were, when these things are funded, because there's a rock, there's stability, there's things to build upon, right? And, and, you know, Rika had mentioned, like, what it feels like to not be a part of, to, to be excluded from society. And I believe these, these resources are inclu- all-inclusive, so it doesn't matter what you look like or where you come from, you know, because sometimes fortunes change, and it can change in the blink of an eye. You know, a person may lose their business and lose everything, and end up on the streets. So these, these block grants are, I believe, essential, because they not only develop communities, they also allocate resources to where they're needed, and are essential to have healthy communities. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Melissa Case.
I just wanted to follow up Ricky, because I actually took the time to go down and watch her do her work, and I think that's an important thing to do, because you always hear conflicting pros and cons of situations. So when I arrived there, I had a bunch of donations for her that I collected in my neighborhood, and I actually have some more I need to drop off. But anyway, when I first walked up, there was a lady walking out that had just taken a shower. She had a towel around her head. She had a big old smile on her face. So that was like, my first experience, just seeing someone happy, happy to be there. And then, so then I got all my donations, sent it to her. Her helpers helped me. I watched her, I don't know if it's her real mom, or someone she calls mom, okay, and organizing everything. Everything was organized. She had, and Ricky gave me a tour. Everything's organized by size. She'd tell me what the needs were, so I actually collected more donations for her, for the needs, and it's just so organized. And then there's like, a little utility cart with shampoos and everything. It's very well-run, and I just wanted to share that with everyone and anyone that's listening, because until you go and look for yourself, you can't really speak on it, I believe. And what else was there? A table for people to have community by. Her whole staff, because it's not just her mom, it's a bunch of volunteers, treated everyone with respect. The showers are very clean, probably cleaner than most people's bathrooms at home. And they're cleaned after each person. She offers a change of clothes for everyone, so they looked respectable. It's just very, very well-run, so I think it's a needed part of community. And if you haven't visited, you probably should, because I think you'd be impressed. Thanks.
Andrew Becker.
Thank you to the council and staff and consultants. I appreciate all of the work that went into this. You know, when you look at all of these different funding sources, and the city's needs, and how often this council is meeting, I would say that I'm a bit remiss that through that five-year PLHA plan, which we were able to adapt to meet our city's needs, we never took a chance to look at that. And I am a bit frustrated. And so I hope that now as this PLHA round is closing out, council works with staff and consultant to really look at PLHA and what the opportunities are, so that we can be prepared for the next round, and, in my opinion, can fully be prepared for the next round, and, in my opinion, can fully capitalize on those dollars, because we know, as we know, dollars are hard to come by, right? And, to that note, you know, I am a bit confused on where some of the community engagement with the CDBG funding and PLHA funding comes from. Seeing, you know, almost a million dollars going towards homeownership and preservation, not saying that those are not needs in our community, but wondering if those are restrictive for our community? When you look at our community, that is 21 census tracts, 17 of them under 80% AMI, and with those homeownership dollars dedicated to low and moderate, with a 630, I think, FICO score required, looking at our low-income census tracts, do we find that those individuals meet those credit criteria, and are able to meet those mortgage obligations even with up to $100,000 in homeownership? I don't know. I think when we have a lot of low-income housing in Sycamore that is constantly transitioning in the market rate space, if these dollars could go towards acquiring those properties and deed restricting them for at least 55 years, I would think that that might be an opportunity. And so, I would like to know where the community engagement was, and how we ended up giving a million dollars to Habitat for Humanity to help 17 individuals in fixing up their homes, and I think it was seven in homeownership. So, if those numbers are not correct, please correct me, but there is, I think, greater needs. And so, the reason I ask about the community engagement, as you all know, I show up to meetings, I was not at some of those CDBG meetings, but I did not see any surveys out there on these dollars, so, thank you. I guess that's my time.
I don't have any other public speakers.
All right, thank you. Council, any questions or comments?
I'll just, first of all, just like to thank Terri House for providing us with binders of information. Councilmember Torres Walker and I were provided with binders with every single application, the resources, the history, previous success or lack thereof, and funding. And, so what, what you're seeing here tonight, when you look at the City Antioch Action Plan funding, is really, it was like, I think we had like, five or six meetings, we went through and looked at all of the data that was provided to us, looking at the, our vulnerable communities, and looking at how we can best, or to the best of our ability, provide resources to them. And the categories are laid out as H1 Housing and Supportive Services for Homeless, H2 Homeless Prevention and Rapid Rehousing, CD1 General Safety Net Public Services, CD2 was Special Needs Populations, it's all laid out in this document, Fair Housing and Tenant Landlord Policies, CD5 was Economic Development, CD6 Infrastructure Public Facilities, and it just goes all the way down. So, we literally had to go through each of those categories, and look at the applications that were applying to receive funding, and then score and rank them based on the information that was provided to us. What you see in this particular document is basically a combination of ratings, rankings by the two of us, Councilmember Torres Walker and I submitted our scoring, ranking, and then in each of those categories, they were, the scores were put together, averaged, and then placed them as a one, two, three, or four, and then we looked at the funding that was in those particular categories, and that's how we broke down the programs that are being funded and at what level. And so, it was a very long process, it was a, for me, it was the first time being on this standing committee, so there's a lot for me to learn, I feel like I learned a great deal, there's a lot more to learn. I do think that, from the previous, from the speaker, Andrew Becker, I do think that we have to look in the future about how we can best utilize the funding that we receive, how we can possibly borrow against the amount of money that comes forward as we look down the road, because I do think we need to look for long-term solutions versus temporary. Preventative measures is really, was important to me, because I do think our veterans, our seniors, you know, sometimes a thing like a water heater, a roof, things that are basic necessities, our seniors or veterans, and many of our families in poverty just can't afford. And then you place their health at risk, and there's a great deal of other factors that come into play. So, the least we could do is try to align these resources to serve the most vulnerable community that we have, and to try to keep people in their homes, try to provide services, like, was just shared, Ricky just shared about the showers and their variety of services, you know, looking for, you know, out for children of violence, looking for, so there's just a whole wide range of services that we had to look through and identify, rank, and prioritize, and that's what you have before you. And so, for, from where I'm sitting, we're bringing this to the council for your review and for your recommend, for your support. These are the recommendations that we've made going through all these various steps to get here.
Thank you. That's the wrap. No, I have fun, I have fun when Councilmember Varbanica was here, and I definitely had fun co-chairing this with Mayor Pro Tim Rocha, mostly because all the funding is going to our most vulnerable communities in those census tracts. One of the things that we requested was to review census tract data, was to understand who was supposed to be served by these dollars. And as we were reviewing that application, I think the thing that was a big sticking point for me was to make sure that these organizations were actually serving Antioch residents, especially if they weren't located in Antioch, maybe they had a co-location, maybe they were in Concord but have a location in Antioch. So, the goal for me was to make sure that the providers had longevity, they have been serving the community for a while with CDBG funds, that they could prove that they were serving Antioch residents in those particular census tracts, at some level of success. I've been on the CDBG long enough to have people come and present, which is why I always say, come to the meetings, because sometimes the service providers show up, they do deep presentations, they tell us what they've done with the funding, how many people they've served, what challenges they've had, what successes they had, and what do they plan to do moving forward. I think the biggest challenge we face right now is, I think this is just the 2526, and so we actually have another five-year cycle coming up. Is it five or three years, Terri?
Yes, this is the first of the five-year cycle.
So, I think there's always room for discussion later, this is the first of the five-year I won't lie, we could do better community engagement, but, and we constantly announce these meetings for the public to come, so maybe there's something we can work out, city manager, to do. And I just think we should do better notification overall for all standing committees in the city that council members are on, so people could understand what's happening. And I also don't think people understand the amount of money that actually goes into serving our vulnerable communities through CDBG. And I will caution us against trying to fill budget gaps with money that's supposed to go to vulnerable people. So, I do think economic development is important, and we did talk a little bit about that, and how these funds could be used for economic development, as well as a lot of the programs do job and workforce development, so being able to help our residents get to work and get jobs, so that they can add to the local economy. So, just want to, we do need to get creative, but I want to be conscious of trying to take money away from vulnerable communities and use it elsewhere.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Thank you for the report, thank you for the work, Mayor Pro Tim and council member on this. When it, under CD4.1, it says Fair Housing Services, Echo Housing, it says the balance of the CDBG funding for 50 persons, but it doesn't have a dollar amount. How does that work when it says the balance, but doesn't define the amount?
We received funding from the coronavirus CDBG funds, and those funds are being carried over from year to year, they do have an expiration date, and we will be expending all of those in this coming year. So, it's just funding that is carried over from year to year from that source of funds that came during the pandemic.
So, how, so how much is, how much will go to this specific?
Those funds are split between Fair Housing and Tenant Landlord Activities, so it's a ratio of about two times for the Tenant Landlord and Fair Housing, a ratio of one to two.
Okay, all right.
Of whatever the remaining funds are.
And then under Infrastructure, CD6 goal, Infrastructure and Public Facilities, there was no, no funding for that one, and it was, part of the description was, improve access to facilities for persons who are experiencing homelessness, including emergency shelters, cooling or warming centers. And so, I was just wondering, you know, because we do have a need for cooling and warming centers and access for homeless, so I was just wondering why that, that particular area wasn't, wasn't funded.
So, the broad priorities are set up for the whole five-year plan. This year, there were no applications for that. During the last five-year cycle, we did replace the HVAC unit in the 18th Street Library, so that it could be used now, and is being used as a cooling and warming, or as a cooling center, and it has the potential to be used as a warming center in the future, should the city wish to partner with them in that way. So, as other prior, as other projects, this is the first two-year cycle of the five-year Consolidated Plan for Grants, and so, in a year and a half, we'll be also asking for grant applications again, and there will be another opportunity for the nonprofits to apply, and the city to apply, to fulfill the high priority needs.
Okay, and then, under H4 Permanent Supportive Housing and Special Needs Housing, I was wondering if any of that, that, it said no activities recommended for funding in this category, if any of that money could have been used towards the Comfort Inn Permanent Supportive Housing with the Home Key Plus?
There's a possibility of that, with funding that may be returned to the CDBG account, and that would require coming forward to council again, once we know if that is going to be granted to us, and doing a substantial amendment then to the Consolidated Plan.
How long before we would know whether there's any, going to be any money coming back to the account?
That would depend on when the application, we received notice from the state about whether or not our application is approved, and I'll defer to the city manager for any further information.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Yeah, that's all the questions I had, thank you. All right, so you know other questions? Do I have a motion?
Well, if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve the recommendations that have been brought forward for this evening.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion of second?
So, I believe we need to take action on each resolution, so.
Each?
Number one and two?
Yeah, so you'll need to make a motion, separate motion for each.
Oh, got it, okay. We have to. Okay, so I'll make a motion, oh, can we move for one? Can we just move for one? Do you want me to read it?
Can you please read it, the number one?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion to approve item one, consider the CDBG Committee Recommendations for Funding, Community Grants with CDBG, PLHA, and the EECBG funds, and adopt the resolution approving the Contra Costa Consortium 2025 through 2030 Consolidated Plan and Draft Fiscal Year 2025 to 2026 Action Plan and authorize the city manager or designatee to make any necessary fiscal year 2025-26 budget adjustments for the approved funding, and sign necessary documents and agreements for approved funding.
All right, we have a motion of a second?
Second.
All right, please cast your votes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, and the second, second one?
Yeah, you want to do the second one? Sure.
Share the, like, share the responsibility, I get it. I would like to make a motion that we, wait, are we acting as the council on this, or something else?
I think we're council.
Okay. I would like to make the motion that Antioch City Council, consider the CDBG Committee Recommendations for Funding, Community Grants with Housing Successor Funds, and adopt the resolution approving Housing Successor Funding for Homeless Services and Administration as outlined in the 2025-26 Action Plan, and authorize the city manager or designatee to make any necessary fiscal year 2025-2026 budget adjustments for the approved funding, and sign necessary documents and agreements for approved funding.
All right, we have a motion, second?
I'll second that.
All right, motion of second, please cast your vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, on to item number five, resolution approving and adopting the fiscal year 2025-26 budget and revising the fiscal year 2425 budget.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. Since March, City Council and staff have been diligently scrutinizing the budget to close a starting point fiscal year 2026 deficit of over $24 million. Initially, staff was able to shave off over $8 million, almost $9 billion from that number, for a fiscal year 2026 deficit of $15,666,448, as presented at the March 4 budget session. Upon further collaboration with the city council, city manager and departments also moved through an exhaustive budget process, and through a series of further adjustments, a general fund budget with a net deficit of $7,737,331, after a $5 million infusion from the Budget Stabilization Fund is presented this evening. We want to acknowledge that there are some budgetary challenges in this first fiscal year coming up, they include slower revenue growth, rising costs, deferred maintenance needs, and state and federal funding uncertainty. I have here our finance director, and she's going to go over any questions you have, and there's obviously two other items after this that are part and parcel, so you can either ask those questions at once, or you can ask us individually, but we present to you the fiscal year 2526 budget.
Good evening, Mayor and council, I think the city manager summed that up really well, and I do want to give, you know, much appreciation and thanks to the city manager and all the staff that helped us pull this together, and the council for, you know, all the hard work we've put in since January moving forward. I know March kind of officially kicked off, January was just kind of an update on the, on the prior fiscal year, but we've put in a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into this to get where it is, you know, and we're not done, there's still a lot to do in this fiscal year, and moving forward through fiscal year '27 beyond, we definitely have challenges to face. You know, we do balance the fiscal year '26 budget using reserves of the general fund, which still keeps us above the 20% reserve policy, as I've attached projections for the outlying fiscal years as, to the staff report, and let me get to that attachment, in attachment B. And as you can see in '26-'27, although it's not adopted, I did add in a transfer in a budget stabilization of $5 million, just to mirror the '26, just because we had talked about that during the sessions, and with that, we do need a reserve above 23, of 23.59%. Again, this is, budget's not being adopted, this is going to change as we move forward, but just so council can see. And then in '27-'28, if we don't do anything to what we're doing now, we'd have to utilize almost $22 million in budget stabilization funds, and then in '28-'29, we're completely out of money. So, it's urgent that we continue to chip away at this budget over the next fiscal year. Hopefully, we can get that $7 million down- Hopefully, we can get that $7 million down to nothing or if anything, you know, at least within a couple million dollars over what measures we take. But it's imperative as we go through the year and look at fiscal year 27, we really address the structural needs, what are the spending priorities moving forward if our revenues aren't changing? You know, it's kind of a wait-and-see game, really seeing what's going on with the economy. It's got huge swings, particularly with any federal funding sources we receive, depending on what the administration does, you know, if CDBG is taken away, for example, or, you know, weird things could happen with our gas tax, any other thing like that. So the work, the buck doesn't stop here, you know. We are going to be doing regular budget updates to the city council. Departments are going to be monitoring this monthly, and we have a lot of work ahead. So, you know, we'll at least after this evening be able to take a couple-week breather and then, you know, move forward, get our ducks in a row and see how we're going to move forward. So the budget, this huge budget document presented encapsulates everything from these budget study sessions. Nothing is new in there that we haven't discussed before. On page three of the staff report, we outline expenditure adjustments that were from May 20th, May 28th, and June 9th, how we further got the budget numbers down. So, and I do want to make clear, because there was a lot of public comment about youth network services, this budget document for 25-26 makes no cuts to youth network services. So I'm not sure where that narrative kind of came from. But even through the, anything that was from the presentations from the youth network services, the robust presentation they gave, nothing was cut from those numbers that they provided. So that is fully funded as initially presented during the budget study sessions. And then council, of course, approved the California For All Grant, which was already anticipated and built into this budget document. If you go to the special revenue section, that's Fund 204, it already had that 1.7 anticipated that council was going to approve that. So we did not recommend any spending cuts to youth network services. So I just wanted to make that clear and so that council is aware that no cuts to youth network services is built into this budget. And then, as the city manager stated, the next two budget items, because we operate as a successor agency, which is a separate entity for resolution and the Antioch Public Financing Authority, it's adopting separate resolutions, but still part of this budget document. There's a tab for the Antioch Public Financing Authority, as well as the Antioch Successor Agency. So with that, I'll turn that over for any questions that council may have.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I do have four speaker cards, but I'm not sure if anybody is here. Sandro Trujillo. I know that Dr. Shimon Wright is no longer here. Kevin Gustavo. And Marone Zudi. Okay. Andrew Becker.
Thank you. So I know tonight is about adopting a budget. But understanding how a city gets revenue, I just want to kind of give a snapshot of the situation we're in here economically, okay? The city of Antioch struggled to come to grips with losing the Comfort Inn as a hospitality space and losing that transient occupancy tax. We are on par in transient occupancy tax with the city of Oakley. We're behind the city of Brentwood. We're behind the city of Pittsburgh. We're behind the city of Martinez, okay? Now, in Antioch, there were two sites that were purchased, designed, and approved by city council for hotels to be built. Today, those sites sit vacant. And according to both property owners, one of them is intently trying to sell his property, and the other is holding it and has no intention of developing it. But, at the same time, the city of Pittsburgh just built its Marriott on railroad, which we've all seen over there by City Hall. And for any of us that have been online and looked at it, I would like you all to know that that Marriott is branding itself as the Antioch Pittsburgh Marriott. Yeah. So people are staying there and paying their revenue to Pittsburgh. But when you Google a hotel to stay in, in Antioch, it sends you to Pittsburgh. The Home Two Suites is right now being developed across the street from Walmart on Leverage. And what's interesting about that project is that the city of Pittsburgh gave that developer a $1.5 million loan to acquire that property, and then a $600,000 grant to purchase that, or to develop that property. And on top of that, was a strong proponent through its economic development department to the state for a C-PACE loan, where they received $10.6 million for energy efficiency. So that's how they can afford to build a hotel in this market. Brentwood had two projects in, and the city of Oakley has one project in. The city of Antioch has none. Pittsburgh's transient occupancy is about 70-80%. I just got off of the phone with Neil Patel, the owner of the Comfort Inn. We were worried about losing that place as a hospitality space. His occupancy to date is 42%. That property is failing hard. That's my time, but I'd love to continue this conversation.
We don't have any other public speakers.
Alright, thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Just wanted to clear something up for clarification. I think the reason why we heard the youth voice tonight was because at the last budget study session we were at, youth network services was funded under the 60-20-20% for Measure W dollars. And in the absence of the community, they weren't here that night when the council made the decision to reallocate 70-15-15. So there was an actual reduction to the youth services funding. And in, because even when I look back at the old calculation versus the one today, there was a reduction. It may not have been significant, but it was.
Well, that is Measure W funding, the rest of it comes from general funds. So the budget, yes, I understand.
So I'm clearing up that there was a reduction made, that's where the concern came from.
But it's not a reduction in expenditures, it's a reduction of what it says is Measure W versus general funds. So overall, the budget is still the same, it's just the pie of Measure W being allocated is.
Is smaller.
Yes, so overall, we didn't cut any expenditures.
But that's what people didn't want. So I'm just clarifying that. I'm not, I'm just saying I don't want to have us saying the public is lying or miscommunicated to, because that's actively what they saw happen, was the numbers being moved around for Measure W. And the concern came from, is this going to be detrimental to the critical services that's being provided to them in the community?
Well, to comment on that, that concern was voiced from week one or week two when we started the budget review process. I think there was some level of assumption that youth services were going to be cut, that we were going to be cutting in all these different areas, a lot of assumptions that were made. Tonight, when that item came up for the $1.7 million approval, it was approved 5-0, there was no doubt that rest was going to do. In terms of advocating, supporting youth programs, veteran programs, senior programs, you know, as far as my perspective, that hasn't changed for me. I just think that there may be, you know, that may be part of what happened. But I can recall each time that we had any kind of discussion about budget and we were looking at particular departments, there were people who immediately came to the table expecting that they needed to speak because they thought we were going to take something away. What I hope happens tonight is that the community sees that we spent a lot of hours reviewing, trying to be as transparent as possible. It was very difficult, very painful. I've served, you know, in different capacities in my career. I don't recall ever in my career spending as many late evening nights looking at budget and having such in-depth conversations that have taken us beyond the day to the next morning. So to me, I think we've done our due diligence to try to get to the best of where we can get with the one-year budget. And I think we all are very loud and clear that we didn't want it to affect our personnel, the people that are working and doing the hard work of today. I want to put a shout out to our staff that do the work. I want to put a shout out to our directors, our city manager. Dawn, you've done just an unbelievable job in doing this. I know that you've had to work to the burning, you know, to handle both ends and doing all the things that you've had to do, and appreciate the work that's gone into it. But it wasn't easy, and I believe for where we are, this is the best we could come up with at this time. But I do think that your comments moving forward is that we really need to look and review month to month of where we're at, where we're going, and if there is spending that's happening that's not necessary. Or maybe we're finding out that there are programs or services that are being funded that aren't being, you know, that aren't being successful, they're not meeting their goals, that we need to pull some money, some funding back when we see that happening versus just continuing to support programs that may not be meeting their mark. So to me, I just want to commend staff, especially our city manager and Dawn for the hard work that you've done. I know you guys have put a lot of time with your department leads and the people that are sitting here in the audience. I know all of you work so hard and you're here with us on these late evenings when you could be at home doing other things. So I just want to express my gratitude and appreciation. But I'm in a position where I'm prepared to move forward and make a recommendation to adopt the budget for the 25-26 year as it's presented.
Just another point of clarification. The approval that happened tonight for the former MAP program, which is now the SOAR program, we didn't fund anything, those dollars came from outside as a grant. So it didn't come from a general fund, and it didn't come from any special funds. It came from outside of the city to continue that work. Had that grant not come, the work would not have been funded. Is also the assumption of the community, and they potentially assumed correctly. And so I just want to be clear that over the past couple of years, over $10 million has came into this city to serve our vulnerable populations, and it didn't come out of this budget. So I think I would really like to see, like, I think you were saying that this is predicting, projecting, like if revenues stay the same, nothing changed, the issues with the economy. But there is also issues with being able to go out and bring in outside dollars to continue some of the critical work around the city, as well as outside dollars for critical infrastructure needs as well.
Yes, and of course, you know, council did approve adding a grant rider during this, so that's going to, you know, substantially help us in that mission.
Yes, Councilwoman Frey.
So I remember on February 10th, in swearing-in ceremony, saying we needed to go item by item, page by page, and it would be painful. And it has been. And I think all members of staff have really helped the city council to articulate the problem that we found ourselves. And it was a $54 million deficit. That's what we're confronted with. And I think that it has been very difficult. And, but I think all of us as the mayor and council members, we certainly have become more informed in detail about the operations, the financing of our services. And I think the staff has also done that, as well as the community. And we are by no means over. I mean, this is, you know, looking at the numbers that have been provided, they're scary. And, you know, we still have the retirement liability. We still have OPEB, which are benefits after retirement liability, that we virtually are doing nothing. And that is an enormous, you know, liability for the city. And so it really has, we really have to redo things. And so, you know, and I also want to point out, because some of the comments that were made earlier, it is incumbent upon the mayor and the council and staff to look at everything. And so when I looked at attachment A, and I looked specifically, you know, at eliminate the Economic Development Director for a savings of the two-year period of time of approximately, you know, $700,000, we also need to take a look at public safety and community resources. Because there has been some discussion that we can still provide the services, but we can eliminate the director and save like $750,000 or more. And so I, from my perspective, everything is on the table. And as we go forward, we really have to examine. You know, does it make sense to have the public, you know, safety and community resources? It does not make sense to me at all. I think that the services can be provided, and the various, you know, segments that created the department can also be changed and be moved. And so that, I'm not saying that I am completely convinced that the public safety and community resources should be a department, particularly when I look at economic development. And let's face it, the most important thing moving forward is economic development. And make no mistake about it, we have to be laser-focused on how we are going to increase our two primary revenue sources, property taxes and sales taxes. And I think you've heard me in the last six months, it makes no sense to me that we have not kept pace, at least with the rate of inflation, on our fees, charges, and assessments. I talked about NPDS program, International Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. That fee has not changed for more than 20 years. And then when I looked at the public works budget and see that a lion's share is going into maintenance, there are lots of things that are called out to be in compliance with the NPDS permit that the city is not doing. And it's because we don't have the resources, and that's really not an acceptable, you know, situation to find ourselves. So this isn't done. This is really step one, and I think everybody needs to realize that. And so I do, I think that Mayor Pro Tim is correct. You know, we need to, on a monthly basis, look at everything. And we need to have a discussion. And we've talked about, at the very beginning, that the third Tuesday of the month would be a study session, and that might be a standing item to put on the study session so that we can constantly take a look and we can have our staff report to us suggestions. We made comments when, you know, Shahad Wright made a presentation on park and recreation about naming rights and things of that sort, it was creative. But we cannot forget that, we cannot say, well, thank you very much, Mr. Wright, see you later. We need to actively look at where we can enhance revenue on a continuous basis. If we have surplus property in the city of Antioch that can be used, you know, or sold, that's something that we need to take a look at. And so, I mean, my feeling is that everything is on the table. We have done a very good job, but we still have a $7.7 million deficit. So let me just, there are a couple of things that somewhat bothered me. And I just want to, on item, on page four, you know, the council has directed that the sworn offer staffing level B 117,000 in fiscal year, you know, 2027. You know, I think we need to clarify that, in my, the language needs to be stronger because some people have already called to me, have already complained that we violated, I have violated, you know, my campaign promise to make, you know, police services the number-one priority. And I'm afraid this does not articulate this very well. And so I would ask that that. And so I would ask that that be rewritten so that it clearly articulates our goal by the June 30th, 2027 is 117. But why did we go to the 105? Because we cannot possibly hire 117 sworn officers in one fiscal year. And there are disabilities, there are resignations, disciplinary actions and things of that sort that number, you know, fluctuate. I just think it needs to be much clearer that we can fill to 105 positions. We believe that is doable. And but I'm telling you already, people have called me and complained and said that we're not, we're violating our promises to hire police officers that have 117. The other, you know, on attachment A, the very end, other adjustments, with regards to remove vehicle replacement, set aside all departments, that's true for '26. I don't remember this council ever saying it was true for '27. And, you know, I think I gave a couple speeches about why I think for '26 it was acceptable, but that would need to be revisited. I don't ever remember, you know, saying that we would do it for both years. The other, quite frankly, as somebody who negotiated contracts on the general fund projections, item A, I don't think the city council assumed that we were going to do a 2% COLA in '28 and '29. As a matter of fact, in the meetings, particularly the one that we had in Nick Rodriguez Community Center, we basically said, look, you know, we don't have money for COLAs. We're already in deficit. And so I know that all of our representative members will be negotiating contracts. And I thought we were just being completely honest with them. Well, I think this is a false premise to assume that there's going to be a 2% COLA in '28 and '29. I think that should be stricken. Because, you know, I don't ever remember the city council, you know, talking about COLAs in '28, '29. I think it's a misnomer, particularly when Ms. Merchant identifies for us very clearly that we may be completely, you know, belly up at the end of fiscal year '27. And that was on her chart, you know, which is the general fund draft budget. And so seeing that disturbed me greatly. And from a HR perspective, from a negotiating perspective, I just think that was a horrible thing to put in. It has consequences.
If I may say, on attachment B, we never really, we did not discuss '27, '28, and '28, '29 at all. What I was trying to give council the picture of is if things stay the status quo, if we are fully funded and reinstate all staff that's frozen, I just want council to see the worst-case scenario and have that out there. And the fact that you can't say, never again, staff, are you getting a COLA? I just wanted to say.
No, I did not say that. But you also don't put forward a false premise.
What I'm trying to show is the fiscal impact. If council were to reinstate everything and we went back, this would be the financial impact. This wasn't, again, we never discussed '27, '28, or '28, '29, and we're not adopting '27, '28, and '29. I'm giving a fiscal picture of what it would look like.
I understand that. But from a HR perspective, from a union negotiation perspective, this is one of the worst things to put down because it is a false premise. And when you take a look at the end of fiscal year '27, it's even worse than that. I am extremely upset because we never talked about it. And that, and this is a multimillion-dollar issue.
Then I shouldn't have given predictions.
Can you direct your comments to me and not my staff?
No, I'm having a conversation with the Director of Finance. If you don't like it, that's too bad.
No, it's not too bad. Please don't talk to my staff like that.
No, don't talk to me that way.
You're talking to my staff disrespectfully and I can't accept that.
And she's talking to me disrespectfully because she could not take a criticism of something that is wrong.
She's trying to tell you that. We're trying to give you the baseline of the worst-case scenario.
I understand that, but we never talked about it. And this has unbelievable consequences for union negotiations.
Okay, you can direct your comments to me.
No, I'm not. And I, you know, this is inappropriate. Councilmembers have the right to ask questions.
I understand.
I have lots of things, but, you know, with Ms. Scott's comments, forget it.
All right, any other comments from council? Councilmember Wilson?
On that note, first and foremost, I want to thank staff for their hard work on this. I know it took a lot for everybody to cut something from their budget. Thank you, Ms. Merchant, for the hard work you do. It does not go unnoticed. You know, economic development is going to be a big thing and how we're going to generate funds. What I am hopeful about going forward, one thing is I have to thank the city manager for the foresight of getting us in front of potential people on the federal level and the state level that can get funding. As Mayor Protem Rocha can attest to, we did find out we were leaving money on the table, especially in the, especially with HUD, we found out, and other areas. So I think with that, you know, with economic development along with what the work that City Manager Scott is doing, I think that's going to be a big help and a big boost of getting funding that we, A, are not applying for. And I know Mr. Becker over here has been saying the things we're not applying for, but then also making sure that we are not leaving money on the table. So I'm looking forward to, you know, work on that. I know, well, I'm putting words into your mouth. Mayor Protem is also looking forward on that, on that front too. So I wanted to say thank you for that. And I'm just, I'm going to just leave my comments right there.
All right, I have a couple of comments on the, on the budget, page two. When we're using $5 million in budget stabilization next year, we're assuming using that, I would, I would like to see that reduced to the amount that keeps us at a 20%, not next year, but in '27, reduce the budget stabilization amount that keeps us at a 20% reserve as opposed to just taking a straight $5 million.
Yeah, we can model that. And so, like we said, we just, that was something you asked us to model for the second year. So we will bring that back.
Okay, I think that, and then on, on the item that Councilmember Frey has mentioned about the police, the police officers, I would, I would recommend that we just leave it at 117 for now in this year's, in the '26 budget and not reduce it down to 105 and just fund it at the 105 and just leave that number what we intended to be in 2027 budget.
Sure, if you're speaking to year two?
I'm speaking to year two. No, I'm speaking in year, I'm speaking in 2026.
Oh, for '25, '26?
'25, '26. Just leave it at 1, just leave it at 117 like we had it before. Yeah, I, on the vehicle replacement, set aside all departments, I think that, I agree that we should take that out for now and reintroduce it as a separate item for, in the future going forward. I understand the idea was to establish, continue out the same baseline. But I like, I think we should, we should re-establish that just because that was a big move for the city to do to even do that in one year.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah, and I will say, everything that's in the model for '27, since we're not adopting '27, it will be, as we build '27, will be brought back to council to be like, you know, do you want to continue this forward, take it out? It's just, when we brought the models forward, you know, we pretty much carried the same thing in '26 and then in '27. But again, we're not adopting '27. So when we build '27, you know, we'll be asking council again if they're still in concurrence of these items.
Okay, because the, then, I don't, I don't want to give, when we run this out to '28, '29, there's a lot of variables that are not going to be realized. And we're running out of money. And I, I just am concerned about having that, that number out there or that, that projection out there when, when there's a lot of things that they can, will, can and will happen in the meantime. Another question is under, I'm on the last page, attachment B, where we have transfer in budget stabilization. So if I add up the 5 million, the 5 million, the 21.9, and the 2.8, I come up with about 35 million. But I thought we had about 40 million in the budget stabilization fund. So is that due to the fact that there's a $1.2 million per year commitment to the funding, the unfunded liability?
That is correct. It was 1.2 million in fiscal year '25 and then we projected 1.3 million each year.
Okay, so when you project that out, that's why it drops down to 35?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, that, that makes sense. And then to the, to the point about leaving out the COLA assumptions, I agree with that as well, that we don't want to be establishing anything beyond, to your point, the baseline moving forward. So I'd like to do that. And then I just had a couple of questions on the, on the budget itself. So, so on the, on the staffing, when we have the staffing, the general fund-funded staffing apart from PD, it looks like there's 19 positions that are general fund-funded that are vacant.
Well, yeah, some of, a lot of them are almost hired up, like, back down to that nine or 10 that we talked about in the email.
Okay, so I guess, I guess my concern is that we, we're, we're hiring people as we speak and we're, we're looking at a $17 million deficit next year, in 2027. And so.
We're only hiring essentials as you asked, so we're not hiring all of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so if we could see a list of what, what is, what is essentials, what are the ones that are frozen, that would be, that would be helpful as well. Thank you for that. And on page 147 of the budget, we have the 1%, sales tax item from '24, '25. It's at 2.5 million and it drops down to 1.5 million. Is that due to the 70, 15, 15 change? Is that what, is that what the result of that?
Well, part of it, yeah, so it funded code enforcement. So the, yeah, part of it is the split and then the code enforcement. Yeah, part of it is the split. I'm not sure, I can't recall off the top of my head if the budget for code enforcement kind of went down a little bit.
So what we'll do is give you the information. We'll follow up with you and send the email out to all council regarding that decline, the 41%.
Okay, and then on, on page 158, the community development code enforcement charges for services, we're showing 350, 350 this year and going down to 107 next year. I'm just wondering why we're reducing our charges for services so significantly in that, in that particular budget?
In fiscal year '24, '25, we had a backlog of citation collections. So that is, it's kind of a cumulative. And so then it's dropping down to what we project would be the level in '25, '26. So there was an accumulation of a couple of years of citation revenue that we need to recognize that's either going to be leaned on the properties for a portion or sent to collection agencies.
All right, and this has been mentioned before, but, you know, to the extent that we have a significant number of code enforcement violations and the fact that we're not realizing revenue from just folks that are just blowing us off, we need, we need to definitely.
Yeah, the entire division will be going through an analysis with David. And part of that is going to be the question that I asked was, how are we working with the city attorney on the fines per day, liens, and court cases?
Okay, because obviously the goal is not to raise money, it's for compliance. But to the extent that we're not getting compliance, then.
Right, well, I think there's been a voluntary compliance. And so there needs to be a bigger mix of proactive compliance.
Yes.
So we're, we're going to change the mix on that.
Okay, and, and then, yeah, that's it. That's my, that's my last question. Yes, Councilmember Freyers?
So on the report pages 51 to 53, it's purchase orders and/or contracts. And so my question is, when we, I think two weeks ago, we received this document which shows all the various contracts for the various departments. And my question is, have all of these been included in page 51 to 53?
Without doing a side-by-side comparison, I would not be able to tell you that at this moment.
It's like Townsend. You know, I know it's a $150,000 contract, but I didn't see it on page 51.
Well, some of these, so what this is, the annual recurring purchase order in our contracts are kind of blanket purchase orders, for example, those that we don't go out to bid for. Or another one, for example, is our general ledger software, which we've had since 2003. We don't go out to RFP to replace that. That contract gets renewed annually, for example, for that software. And then like Contra Costa County, the lab testing, that's a recurring annual expense. We don't go out to RFP for the county to do lab testing. So these are just recurring blanket purchase orders, not contracts that would separately go to council for approval, like the Townsend, if it's over the 50,000, that would come to, you know, initially when it was approved. If it was approved by city council on a contract, that contract is still active. It is not on this list, the 51 to 53.
Because when we went through, when we went through these, there was some discussion about eliminating, you know, some of those. And so, so Townsend will come before us.
Right, so there, so this is not the same as those contracts. And some of these will come up sometimes for RFP as well, so.
And then under the police contracts, whatever, WBA consultants, we had a discussion about that. You know, was it 450,000, was it 225? So that contract will come before the council?
We have a list of to-do items that we are coming back with. We just wanted to get through tonight. So we just had to get here. So yes, there, there's a list that we will be working on, Dawn and I, for post-budget approval to come back to council.
Okay, but I mean, we actually went through some of these and we, and we cut some of the stuff. So that's, that's what, it's like, under economic development, with the 259,000, 200, $313, we cut it to 75. I mean, that was a discussion that we had.
Yes, and that was done because that was just a budget for a certain amount of marking, not necessarily all vendors identified. So that is accounted for in the budget. In terms of the WBA consulting, 450,000 is built into the police department budget for a full year of contract. And that is one thing, if you can recall, Captain Bitner also speaking of depending on the extent of services that would need, that is going to be needed and also with ensuring compliance with the DOJ and some potential future compliance that we have to have. We may need to have the full year of contract, so that will be evaluated and brought back.
There's a long list of things that we will bring back. We just haven't been able to get to it because we were trying to get to it tonight.
I just don't want it to be assumed that that's going to be a $450,000 approved contract. I mean, so, so as long as it's, you know, staff understands that all the contracts that are coming to us, they're discretionary and they may not be approved.
All right, any other questions or comments? Anybody? I, I would just, I wanted to thank city manager and department heads and staff for all the hard work that went into this. I know it has been a lot. It's been painful. And, and so thank you for, for doing that and getting us to this point. I was, I was hoping when we first started the process and through it that we could have, we could have reduced costs a little bit more, but I'm, I'm okay where we are today. I think it's a good starting point for our next effort. But we just need to be very intentional in how we approach addressing the 15-plus-million-dollar 2027 deficit and just working on it real time. So I look forward to doing that and doing it cooperatively. And, and it's going to be, if we thought this was hard, this was, this was a low-hanging fruit. You know, it's going to get, it's going to get harder as we move forward. So with that, do we have a motion to approve the budget? budget?
I'll move to approve.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the fiscal year budget, have a second?
I'll second.
And we have a motion and a second, please cast your votes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, and then the next item is a resolution of the City of Antioch as successor agency and housing successor to the Antioch Development Agency, adopting the fiscal year 25, 26 budget and revising the 24, 25 budget. Do I have a motion to adopt that, and in the motion, please read the recommended action as, because we'll be acting as the successor agency and housing successor? It's item number six. Oh, and, and do we have any, I'm sorry, do we have any public comment on that?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion that the City of Antioch as successor agency and housing successor to the Antioch Development Agency, adopt a resolution approving and adopting the fiscal year 2025, 26 budget, and revising the fiscal year 2024, 25 budget.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, please cast, I'm sorry, yes. Yeah, well, we did a separate, okay, we have a motion and a second, please cast your vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, and do we have a motion for item number seven? Resolution of the Antioch Public Financing Authority adopting the fiscal year 25, 26 budget.
Mayor?
Mayor, we have a comment.
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment?
Thank you. I know it's getting late, just don't want to rush these things. I don't know if you have a motion to extend the meeting either, but that's all right. So, I will say that I appreciate staff and all the work that they have done, all of staff, in all the years, and council, you know, but I will tell you that for some staff, I stand here, you know, as an adult speaking to you all, and some staff have been here since I was a child, receiving these community resources, and are still here, and advocating for our community, and fighting for our community, and I think that, that's something that we should acknowledge regularly. I also think that it's very important that we work together, and, you know, the reason why I stood up and made a comment for this particular item is because we are a public financing authority, and so what does that mean? We can put out bonds, we can put out economic subsidies to spur revenue, to spur growth within our city. And so I only stand here just to remind you all, 11:24, that we are a public financing authority, and we can do those things, just like other cities are doing. So we should do those things, just like other cities are doing. I appreciate all your time, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
We do not have any other public comment.
All right, so we have a motion, is that correct? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, please cast your vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, public comments?
Thank you, once again, I realize it's late, but before my time starts, point of order, at the beginning of the meeting, when public comments are announced and the speaker rules are read, I would like to ask the city attorney, the Brown Act specifically notes how a speaker is able to get up and participate in a meeting, and the language here really directs the community that your only option is to submit a card. And so, a lot of our community members reach out to me and say, I didn't even know that that was possible. And that is not my responsibility to let them know what their constitutional rights are, that is the government's. So with that point of order, I would like my time back. Thank you.
Sure, go, go ahead and reset it to three minutes, please, thank you.
Thank you. I, I just want to say that, you know, I, I, it's, listening to the conversation, I, I, sometimes I don't know where to go, or where the direction for us as a community to go is, you know. Hearing, we might not need this department, or parts of this department, but we need this department. I mean, I reached out to the city about how we were losing our only vacant movie theater to a church, and the city didn't even know that, and that's a major economic hit for our city. But then I look at, why is that theater vacant? And I went to Deer Valley from 2005 to 2009, and I was there at the movies on a date on the Saturday night, when one of my 16-year-old classmates was shot in the back. I was there at the theaters, inside, in line getting popcorn, when a 14-year-old kid was kicked in the head eight times because he wouldn't give up his $25 game card. And so, is it the police department's job to be there, treating that space like a jailhouse? Like, community members are out on the block, we got an hour to go in and enjoy, but we're being watched, or is it a community's responsibility to provide the resources so that youth are not out unsupervised in spaces where they don't know how to act? And you, you stand here, and you listen to department heads and youth directors come up here and say, we're providing nights for youth to go out and to engage. And I wonder how many kids are getting shot at those publicly-supported programs, or how many kids are getting kicked in the head? And for the parents of those children that had to experience that at that space, I don't think that we could justify it as a cost savings for the city overall. Are you saying that your city's budget is worth more than that child's safety, or support for resources? And I understand that's not what you're saying, but I'm saying that's the direct connection. It's not an overlap, they are connected, and this is what council member Torres Walker has been saying, that we promote public safety in different ways, and it is not on the police department to be the only avenue. And so, we lost the movie theater at Stam, we lost the movie theater in the Rayleigh Shopping Center, we lost the El Campanel's movie theater, and we lost the AMC Theater. So there are needs, but I don't know if we can meet those needs through additional cuts, it's, it's a larger conversation. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I just am going to read through, I don't think these people are here, but I know Melissa Case is here, Dr. Shimon Wright, Corazon Rivera, Jerem Gunter, and Melissa Case.
Well, I guess I'll end this meeting with a thank you, because I know all of you worked hard on this budget, and I also want to say, wow, what a week in Antioch. We had farmer's market, I didn't get to see, hear the public comments, but I'm sure there were some. So I guess I got to thank Kwame for the, that, I enjoyed it very much. I didn't get to see you around, I guess I came too late, but I saw my favorite council member there, and it was very nice, and I like having nice things in Antioch. Another scary thing that happened was the fire in my neighborhood that I was two blocks away from, and I wanted to thank the police department and the first responders. We had police going up and down our streets, you know, being as calm as they could, telling us to get prepared to evacuate, and everyone was treated respectfully in a very stressful situation, and even after the fire, we had police and first responders in our neighborhood answering questions and helping our community. So I just want to say a big thank you to them, and that's basic, that's why I wanted to speak tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
I don't have any other public speaker cards.
All right, any staff communication?
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. I want to reiterate the thanks that you all gave to our, our finance director and the rest of our directors for their tireless work on getting this budget to you tonight. I also want to thank our chief of police and his staff for the assistance with the fire. It was nice to hear from Contra Costa Fire, and getting the nice notes of thanks for the city's quick response through our police department, really proud of them. I want to make sure that everybody knows that we are having district meetings. We started off the series with council member Wilson's district, District Four, and then last Wednesday, we had an unconventional, yet really fun, district meeting for council member Torres Walker. The format changed to be a human-centered design approach, where there were people not being talked at, but there were stations that you could go to. So I want to thank our public works director, as well as our chief of police, and council, our supervisor Chanel Skels Preston, as well as our DA for showing up and getting into their respective corners. We do have a, a update for our general plan, the RFP closed, and scoring begins next week on that, so you'll get information on that. I also want to let everybody know that the manager minute, or the city manager's newsletter launched, the reboot of it, last week, it was sent out, and you'll get it monthly. If you would like to be on the listserv, just go to our website and subscribe, and you'll get that. And I think the mayor pro tem announced the Downtown Antioch Association of, of the business meeting tomorrow night. I just wanted to let everybody know that our community development director is going to be there, economic development as well as our PIO, the mayor, and our council, so you can also ask questions, and we'll be giving updates at that meeting. And then, next week, our staff, including Terry House, will be going to the National Alliance to End Homelessness, to look at best practices, and to look at funding sources for initiatives that we have here. So we will be in DC again. And then we have a, another legislative trip with the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and council member Wilson, next month, or late next month or early August, where we'll be breaking up into two distinct teams to go to Sacramento to do legislative advocacy for the City of Antioch. The City of Antioch was also recommended for the city government representative seat on the council of homelessness, so that vote will be, I think, today or tomorrow, so you'll be seeing that on the news. I think that it was my spot, and we're going to try to do the mayor swapping in when I cannot go, which will lead into our ad hoc committee that we'll be bringing back to you for the council on homelessness, and then the task force that the staff will be looking to facilitate for you all. And lastly, I want to welcome our spring board interns. I see you all, some of you just very patient in the audience, even on your phone, but it's really sweet to see you all up and down from the first floor to the third floor at the yard. So huge thanks to APD for taking some of our interns, thanks Captain Bitner, as well as our deputy director, Zapata, taking some of our interns, and then Jaden has like six interns, I mean, that PIO, he really knows how to use staff. So there's lots of projects coming, and webinars, and podcasts, so you'll have interns reaching out to you for little clips and, and interviews over the next few months, so please respond to them. They're very, very nice. And I think that's about it for my updates, thanks so much.
Right, thank you. Council communication and future agenda items?
The fire was really concerning, I also want to thank APD and all of the first responders. I do want to remind us all that it is fire season, and, you know, I don't know what type of communication campaign we need to remind people to be careful of our own fireworks. Fireworks are starting, I don't think fireworks haven't started early enough, but people are starting to pop fireworks. I remember like a no buts campaign or something like that, people thump butts out their cars, cigarette butts, you know, be careful when you lighting fire pits, be careful when you barbecuing, like whatever you're doing, just try to do it with a sense of safety. The other thing I want to mention is, like, I know that we're trying to make good partners out of the railway, but they haven't been great at weed abatement, and there are a couple railways that need to be abated in the city before my fence catch on fire again for the third time, right? So I think if we could just all be conscious that the weather is only going to get hotter from here, and you too can prevent a for, a fire, right? I think that's important for us all to know. Thank you, city manager and staff, everybody who showed up and showed out for the District One meeting, thank you to our district attorney, Dinah Beckton, our supervisor Chanel Skels Preston, the chief, all the officers who showed up and mingle with the community, looking forward to the next opportunity to engage.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Nope? Yes?
And I'm not sure of the time, but the presentation by the Contra Costa County Mosquito and Vector Control District, they're actually holding a meeting on June 28th, which is, I believe, is that this week, right? Is that the 28th? Is that Saturday?
Yeah.
Yeah, so on Saturday at Harbor and Mount Terre Parks, but I'm not sure of the time, I don't know if any of you might be aware of the time, but... Is it on our website? Oh, that's right, I shared it, that's right. Yeah, so I just wanted to put that out there, I didn't know if we had had that communicated out to the public, but following the presentation by the Contra Costa County District, they're having a follow-up meeting with the community to inform them of some of the other issues that have come up with other mosquitoes that are complete, cause problems for our health and safety. And so they're going to do that on Saturday, the 28th, I'm not sure of the time, so go to the website, since Antioch's posted it, the City of Antioch, to find out more, if you live in around the area of Monterre and Harbor.
All right, thank you. And I'd just like to thank Josiah for sticking it out for the second week, and a second meeting in a row, I saw him upstairs, and he's going to be, I think, working with Jaden, so thanks for, for showing your interest, I know you have a desire to be in politics. If you want to talk to me, we'll try to talk you out of it, but, no, I mean, it's, it's great, so you're going to get a lot of great experience up there, I look forward to working with you. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
We could stay a second.
All right, please cast your vote.
Motion to adjourn at 11:38 PM carries 5-0.
Me adjourn.